Is it time? Okay. I'd like to call our meeting to order, the regular business meeting of the board for Thursday, February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and ask Ms. Weber for a roll call to establish quorum, please.
Clerk Osborne. Member Perry. Member Kelly.
Here.
Member Malcheski.
Here.
President Vickers.
Here.
I'd like to ask one of our students, Nick, for the pledge, please.
All righty. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We have an agenda to adopt. Are there any changes or additions in the agenda?
No changes.
Have a motion, please. On favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's five-oh. We have any public comment received for non-agenda items?
None received.
Thank you. We have section five, reports. We begin with our student board members.
Okay, so to begin with Elmoreau, they are continuing the tradition of celebrating Mental Health Mondays. They're focusing on building a healthy, positive mindset with the staff in order to pay it forward to students. So last Monday, aligning with National Cheese Day, their team served nachos to the staff and shared tips on how to keep a positive mental mindset. Next, third grade had a performance of Willy Wonka in the Chocolate Factory, an Elmoreau tradition. And Elmoreau and TOW released their sneak peek for the spring after-school program this week. And a special thanks to school powers help with recruiting quality class offerings for ASP, and they are looking forward to another great session this spring. At Top of the World, they have had two Mindful Monday student events, reminding students to be mindful of their mental health. Second grade students went to the Heritage House for a field trip. And TOW is continuing with their weekly Dolphin Card Store, which is recognizing positive student behavior with prizes they can buy with their Dolphin Cards. They have continued monthly ABC assemblies to celebrate positive student behavior. And LAM Lab Days and Art Master Lectures for various grade levels are in progress. This month, many teachers are using Valentine's Day celebrations to foster kindness and communication skills among students. Lastly, they have hosted their second restorative practices training for the second cohort of teachers. And in many classes, students are participating in community circles as well as curriculum circles on a regular basis. At Thurston, they are finishing up their college and career week, thanks to the counseling team. TMS has had an exciting week overall, with College and Career Expo, eighth-grade CTE presentations, and budget workshops. TMS counselors are working on one-on-one conferences with seventh graders to reflect on their strengths from the Naviance Assessment. And thanks to PTA, TMS's Winter Fest Challenge was hugely successful. The school has raised over fifty-five thousand dollars for school-wide programming. Lastly, at Laguna Beach High School, Winter Formal was very successful, and we had the highest number of kids to attend. A Student Senate meeting was held this week, discussing Spirit Day ideas and ways students can get more involved on campus. And this week, there was a Flow Film Showcase, where two awards were given to students for animatics and short film. We had amazing judges of the showcase, one of which was a co-founder of the Film Festival. Flow English class projects are going well. Seniors have completed projects like a video resume that were shown at the Flow Film Showcase. Our spring season of sports is underway, with women's water polo and women's basketball currently in the midst of CIF. Scholarships and applications are being sent in with a deadline coming up at the end of February. And class registration is coming up, as well as eighth-grade FAQ and eighth-grade FAQ to inform rising high schoolers on expectation, rules, et cetera. And that's all.
Thank you. Thank you for a very thorough and informative report. Seriously, thank you. We have reports from our bargaining units, and we'll begin with Laboufah. Thanks, Sarah.
Well, I don't really have a report tonight, but things are just moving along well. And when things do come up, I always appreciate the responsiveness and support from our district officials and our directors and site principals. So that keeps things nice and smooth. And we are, I know that elevation, what Yadi has done for our English language learning, the lunch and learn trainings have been well-attended and are really good. So that's been, she's had three sessions now. So that's been really interesting for us, and so we appreciate that, to be able to have that training also. So anyways, but that's all, and I hope everyone had a happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Report from CSCA.
At our February eighth meeting, we had, all of our officers were installed by our local CSCA regional rep. So we're all officially installed as board members. Our executive officers spent Saturday, February fourth, in training classes for those positions. We are also in the process of reviewing all of our re-class requests with the Human Resources Team and the committee, and the first one being Nutrition Series Recommendations, which is on the agenda tonight. We have up to eight classified employees that are going to be attending the CSCA Paraeducator Conference in Ontario in April, and we're happy to be back in person for that and sending and having the support of the district to send those people for those learning opportunities. Lisa and I will also be attending the CSCA Annual Conference this summer, July, in Reno, Nevada. And we are excited about starting to receive applications for our scholarships also. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have a report from our superintendent, please.
Good evening. It's been a busy couple of weeks since we last had our meeting, but again, thanks to the team for the amazing celebration, I think, for all of our students at the last board meeting. Also, not to be left off, congratulations, congratulations to our own Anna Karen. She made the top thirty-five under thirty-five National School Public Relations Association. So, good to you. Very well deserved, I think, as we all know. I do want to thank the PTA as well. I know, like, putting on something like the Winter Fest, I think Member Osborne could probably speak to, is the challenge and heavy lift that entails to put something together like that. So I know that there's a big team that was involved, but special thanks to Shaheen, and I know all the work that goes into that just is very, very massive. So I heard the kids had a lot of fun. I heard that Joe swam a lot in the dunk tank. And, but again, thank you to the PTA. Also, thanks to Mike Morrison. We actually arranged a visit, kind of as a little bit of a last-minute situation. The new COO of Canvas, Instructure, which is the online system that we use, happens to live just down the way, and he wanted to come by and pay a visit to see what we were doing, and so had an opportunity to talk with Chris Ball. And of course, you know, he left just really impressed with the work that our teachers are doing and staff are doing and our tech department are doing, to really kind of continue the rollout of Canvas and how we're using, you know, the platform in the most effective way, and wants to, you know, talk with us about things that they're thinking about to get our feedback. And I think that's always really nice to have that kind of relationship. So thanks to Mike for doing that, and I think he actually even offered to be a mentor, a parent mentor for the AER class next year. So talk about really cool. I think the company's worth maybe like five billion dollars or something like this. So great to have him right here as a neighbor, so we look forward to that, that relationship as well. So other than that, we're working through. I know the team will have some updates on some of the work that they're doing, but really Chad's been instrumental in the Leadership Pathway Series, and I'll talk probably a little more about that, whether in the weekly update or in one of his updates. But it was great to see a lot of our staff together, kind of talking and about leadership and what that entails. So with that, I'll give the rest of my time up.
Do I recall that Canvas is very popular with the students at the high school level?
Yes, they, they actually like it. It's one of the more user-friendly platforms, I think, that we've had. It really is intuitive, and we've built a lot out. We have a career center side of that, a college side of counseling side, so that there's actually, it's really a one place where you can go, and you don't have to search the website to find the information you're looking for, has a calendar feature that can, we can put stuff on. So I think we're still learning all the things that you can do with it, because there are so many things that you can do with it. But I think as a tool, it's quite effective, so.
Thank you. We'll go to our executive cabinet members and begin with Mr. Dixon, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Had a really good meeting today, actually, with our Emergency Preparedness Interagency Collaborative, MOCU, you're called EPIC. It's our interagency collaboration group for safety that we meet with surrounding districts and cities and local agencies, such as Orange County Fire Authority, Orange County Health Department. And we really go through a lot of what we've been doing with our tabletop exercises. And as an example, if you recall, last November, we held our first, our large-scale EPIC tabletop exercise at Sage High School. So today's meeting was our debrief with the After Action Report, and we'll provide more information in the weekly on that. And it was really good. A lot of the discussions are exactly what we're going through and how to improve, and the lessons learned that we can gather from other districts who have also gone through similar experiences. So it's a great organization to be a part of and appreciate the board's support with our safety program and allowing us to do that. So it's been very positive, and you'll hear more about it in the weekly. I'm also very excited to mention that the salad bars at the elementary schools are back. So they are back as of today. They'll be rolled out at Elmoreau tomorrow. We're really excited. It's still, we're still struggling a little bit with getting every order that we want. There still is a little bit of a supply chain issue, but that doesn't mean that we can't fill those salad bars. So we're gonna do our best to make sure we roll those out. We know that we've heard a lot from the parents wanting those back, and we're very excited to bring them back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conlon.
Thank you, President Vickers. So I'll keep my report brief this evening, since we have a number of presentations coming up this evening. So as you know, with the public hearings on the agenda this evening, the negotiation season is upon us. So as the district and associations are committed to the interest-based bargaining process, the techniques have proven to be beneficial in opening lines of communication, sharing information, and building trust. Both sides believe the IBB process improves the relationship and produces a better collective bargaining agreement. So CSCA and the district have our first session on March first, and Laboufah's first session is March twentieth. So we look forward to continuing to work collaboratively with both parties to come to a joint agreement on amendments to the contracts. And as you know, we've already come to an agreement with salary and benefits. That's, that's locked in for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So with that, I wish everyone a safe and restful, good winter break. Thank you.
Dr. Mayberry.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. We have a big mid-year update for data that we'll share. The Social Services will share more information later today. So, but I did want to give a special thank you to our counselors. Last week was National Counselors Week, and they were all at the Orange County Counselor Symposium, but they do amazing work in helping our students in just anything and everything. And so we're very fortunate to have such, such a good team of counselors. And then our, with, with Kim Johnson, our Director of Early Learning, we've really got a lot of school readiness themes. She's on board now. We've got a lot of our early school readiness themes up and going. Learning Link is up and running and, and full of kids and families. We're meeting with our partners a lot more, and so it's been a really lot of action and engagement with our community partners, with our early learners lately. And then the last thing, just wanted to put a save the date out there. We'll have more information coming out soon, but on March four, Tuesday, March fourteenth, from six to eight, we're gonna bring you back our annual arts showcase. So this will be the celebration of the arts for our visual and performing arts. We'll be at Laguna Beach High School. We'll continue to put out more information, but that's gonna have kind of a walking view of our different visual arts, but then also a schedule of performing arts that you can see at the same time. So we're really looking forward to that next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have a report from our high school principal, Dr. Omen.
Good evening. I'm excited to be able to speak to you tonight, and I want to thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to have us all challenge each other to frame this presentation and information around working in an organization with a board and a district leadership that says yes and allows for innovative thought and creates opportunities for our staff and students. So on behalf of my team at Laguna Beach High School, I thank you guys for that and, and the, and the vision you have around the work that we get to do with young adults. And I'd also like to thank my colleagues that I get to work with and am challenged by every day. So I'm excited to present to you tonight. I'd like to share with you something I know you've all seen before, and that is the three goals or areas of focus that we have as a district: college and career readiness skills, socio-emotional competencies, and positive self-identity, and of course, safe, equitable, and inclusive schools. We, as a district, have identified these goals, and this evening, I'd like to focus on what it means to the high school. For us, you can see down below, we've really simplified our approach and the work that we do. So goal one, really, at the high school level, reflects our support and growth that we try to provide for students. Goal two, we'll focus on student and staff connections. And goal three, really, when we talk about it at the high school level, for us, it means engaged and empowered students that exist in a campus that practices an impactful school culture in a positive way. So as we move into goal area one, we have the fortunate opportunity to have a more robust counseling team with us this year, and we have opportunity to take time and direct an intentional focus on students and their needs that maximize their awareness of learning options and opportunities while in school, and then also creating a variety of opportunities in life after high school. You can see here, I bulleted a few items that I want to point out, but mainly a real rigorous focus around A through G eligibility and awareness for our students. With the new Naviance platform, our students are able to take inventories that build and identify their personal strengths and help build career and learning interests around those personal strengths, which is, it's a really exciting tool that we're starting to use more regularly on our campus. Of course, we offer a variety of college admissions visits throughout the year, especially on the front end of a school year, where we're, our students are hungry to learn the options that they may have around colleges and universities. And then this year, we have a specific focus on FAFSA completion for our seniors, so that they can build out their opportunities for financial aid and scholarship. Continuing to discuss the goal area one, really, we focus on creating a variety of options and opportunities for our students. We would utilize this, we would typically consider kind of unconventional learning, learning outside of a class, a traditional classroom as we know it. But it's definitely for our students' value-added. And here, you can see our dual enrollment over the past four years has slowly increased, so students are becoming more aware of those opportunities outside. I'd like to say, one of the good things that came out of the pandemic and us being in quarantine was that students and families and arts team at the high school became a lot more astute at various options for student enrollment in courses. You could also see our pathways, so our CTE pathways. And we've had, last year, we had forty-three pathway completers in seven different pathways, but it is important for me to note, we actually have eight pathways on campus. One that's not a completer pathway for us yet is emergency response, but we hope to have student interest to build out a list of completers for that pathway, too. I also wanted to share with our pathways, you can see the last four years of trend in student interest around that depicted in this pie chart here, and you could see the kind of ebbs and flows of student interest throughout the years. One of the things we found that really helps with access and interest is when we were able to optimize offerings while, within our bell schedule on campus. But we still do have a large number of students going to CTE pathway courses outside of our, off, off of our campus. But I just wanted to kind of highlight that as a trend for your reference, nothing that needs to be focused on right now. In addition to that, a really important indicator of success in, in college and university is obviously AP courses. The high school, we've, we've consistently increased access to AP coursework, and you can see that our pass rates are kind of trending toward pre-pandemic numbers. But more importantly, what I'm really proud of is what we've created as it relates to access to coursework for students. And you could see that over the past five years, including this year, the blue line on the right graph represents our AP enrollment, and then the red line next to the blue represents the actual number of exams taken. So as an example, this year, we have an enrollment of three hundred and eighty-three students, and they're slated to take eight hundred and eighty-eight tests. So that's a kind of a little over two per student test, where the, the year before, that was under two stu-, two AP tests per student. So our confidence in, in test-taking for our students has gone up because of exposure to AB coursework, which is exciting. In addition to that, we really have a sincere focus on creating relevancy for our students and what they learn. So nearly half of our teachers have participated in unit redesign opportunities provided by the district. We have another, we have another eleven slated to attend the unit redesign opportunities coming in the spring. And this really helps us practice our routine of reflection and refinement in the work that we do. Additionally, it's kind of a joke on our campus to have these continued conversations and talks around bell schedule, but, you know, in my six years at the high school, I think we've truly had six different bell schedules. So while we joke about it, what it really is, it's a reflection of the work that we do, where we are consistently looking at what's happening, refining what's happening, to really help students with support, variety, growth, and opportunity. I challenge my staff to come to work every day, not just to teach, but really enjoy what they do, and I think we want that to be reflected in our students as they come to school. We don't want them to simply do school, but we want them to embrace their learning. And I think when we build relevancy around what they learn, that helps. As we transition our conversation into goal area two, this has really challenged us to really strengthen our staff and student connections, and it really starts with directly assessing student needs, right? So when we talk about student support and service, we talk about talking to students directly and asking them about their needs. We've done this through a counseling needs assessment in the fall, and we will do it again in the spring, to really guide the work that we do around student support and building connections with staff. We also have opportunities for students to work with one another in our peer mentor network, so that they can bounce ideas and share challenges and issues with one another and come to some type of viable conclusions and support. We, we definitely try to de-stigmatize any challenges that our students have as they've kind of come back to campus and lived real school life again through our mental health awareness events. We have individual work with students through our, of great student support specialist work. And more, what I really want to highlight tonight is our work around an ASCA model program ramp, which really shifts the focus of our counseling, and I'd like to share that here. It really guides intentional work around grade-level needs and focus. As you can see, when we talk about these competencies, we're, we're really honing in on ninth grade, developing self-advocacy and building relationships. In tenth grade, that evolves into self-exploration, really finding the why around what they're learning and what their interests are. And then eleventh grade, it's about kind of building the tenacity and strengthening connections that they've established their first two years in high school to kind of tee up their final year and their senior year, which will really focus on maintenance. That's a high level of stress. You've heard our student board representatives report out on that at the beginning of our school year, and really provide them with some supports, but also the confidence to navigate that challenging time as a senior. Shifting the work that we do as counselors was found to be very important. You can see this, this chart depicts really the touchpoints that we have for students in, in the realm of counseling, and it identifies what we call direct and indirect services. These are tabulated in Ares when we see students, and, and you could see that list of direct services, what that looks like and what indirect services look like. But the recommendation for ASCA is that eighty percent of time should be spent with direct services with students and twenty percent with indirect services. You can see on the right pie graph that in the beginning of the last school year, most, much, much of our time, based on the tabulations and Ares, was focused on pretty much fifty-fifty, half indirect and half direct services. As we really called out and analyzed the work that we've done, we've systematically put things in place that have reduced our direct, or increased our direct services to eighty-two percent of our time and decreased our indirect services to eighteen. It's important to note, really, though, that indirect services and counseling are important to coordinate with students, but direct services provide better individual outcomes for our young adults, and direct services also really allow us to better set up the indirect services that we provide, if that makes sense. Also, when we asked students what their specific needs were, we had a great response rate of over eighty-eight percent of our students directly responding to the, the counseling needs assessment, and it reflected our work in three focus areas. Those are depicted here. You have academic needs, socio-emotional needs, and college and career needs. Now, these are all, when you look at the, the percentage of response and need around these issues, they're all pretty common sense, but they do kind of call out the, and help us prioritize what we need to do in each one of these buckets. So around academic needs, there was a call, especially for our younger students, to really have an idea of good time management, some nudges, some tips that help them be successful around organizations, study skills, and time management. Socio-emotional needs, we're really focused highly on stress management with other accompanying issues that we all deal with as a counseling team around mental health concerns and other just general challenges as students transition into high school. On the college and career front, it's pretty simple. Students want to really understand careers and career options that they have ahead of them. They want to know where they can learn and get the most information about college options, and most importantly, financial aid and how to pay for it. When we talk about goal three, it's kind of one of my favorite topics, because for us, we need to think about what we do to engage and empower students. What, what do they, do they, where do they come to learn? And are they surrounded by and participating in practices that positively impact school culture? So there are various platforms and initiatives that we all have in our work that call us to action for challenging and empowering our young adults that we're lucky enough to work with at the high school. But I'd like to example our sustainability initiative, not only as a district, but at our high school. So the work that we're doing around sustainability, I think, is interesting in the sense that we have an opportunity for all of our students to participate in at the, the high school, and that is our flow program. I'm sure you've heard us speak about that a number of times, but it's a great example of where our staff and students tie the love of learning together with opportunities for community stewardship, peer mentoring, and really just casting our net in a wider space outside of our school walls. So here you can see an example of just what's happened in the last four months around the topic of flow. We have common reads for each grade level, which you all know about. We have had this year, community art installations at our Coast Film and Music Festival, which is a community event. We have relevant assembly topics that build, build interest and relevancy around really pressing issues for each grade level, where we have industry leaders and industry innovators come and speak to our students. But most importantly, you can see on this list here, we have opportunities for our students as young adults to share and cast their net out to the greater school community by going into the elementary schools, sharing ideas here at Thurston. I think we did that on the February fifteenth, where we had a spoken word event here that talked about environmental issues. We had the great film festival that was shared earlier, where students produced a product and got critiqued by people in the industry. So we have a lot of opportunities around, simply around the idea of sustainability and that initiative we have at the district, to really drive the work, but more importantly, create growth, opportunities for growth for our students. Makes me really excited. In addition to that, when we talk around goal three, we are also talking about ways to create environments where conversations happen with young adults. That happens both formally and informally on our campus. Formally, we have, I, we have groups like the Breaker Leadership Team, which is all of our club leaders that congregate together to talk about really important issues around their club, but also, more importantly, around our diverse. to talk about really important issues around their club, but also more importantly, around our diversity, equity, and inclusivity work. And that has evolved into really strong student voice around what the legacy they leave for the students that come after them looks like. So we're having a really great, interesting conversations around that. We have formal uh, uh, formal arenas like Student Senate where we can talk about issues, uh, fun things like what's the theme for prom? What are we doing uh, as it relates to uh, spirit activities for the week leading up to homecoming? But also more other like facility issues that may come up that we wouldn't know as adults, but they face and challenge students. So we have that. We have counselor touchpoints that provide students with uh, actionable goals and opportunities to really articulate that and plan out what that looks like. And then, of course, I've talked to you about the student legacies that we want our club leaders and other leaders on our campus to leave behind for students. So we have a term in our district, every student, every day. And when we talk about supporting students in multi-tiered systems, what we really mean is we want to know every student, their story every day. So at this point in time, I'd like to share just in closing what that looks like in practicum. For us at the high school, it looks like data. And what you're looking at here is not meant for you to make sense of, but it is what we look at. And what you see here is our Algebra One at Promise group. And what I'd like to share is these are thirty-six students that in our first administration of I Ready and the use of other indicators like past grades and eighth grade mathematics, their CAFS score, their teacher, the current grade they have in Algebra One High School Mathematics. We put this list together of thirty-six students that needed help. And it was a cause for challenge for us. We reflected on our work. Jason, the superintendent, and I had a great conversation around what our response is to students like this. And typically for us, it was calling out what was the matter? And the matter was you didn't do well on a test. The matter was you weren't turning in homework in a timely manner. So we shifted that look because we knew we needed to do something to achieve uh, to close a little bit of a gap here. And we started talking about really the deficits the students had in learning. So these thirty-six students had data conversations with teachers, with their parents around where their deficits were in Algebra One. And they had also, more importantly, a discussion around what a plan would look like to help them. So in the short time that we had these conversations and implemented our initial changes, we uh, decided to run another I Ready assessment diagnostic for these students with just a, a little bit of intervention and support. So you can see that that's reflected here in the thirty-six students that took the diagnostic the first time in fall. Um, and then the second time of those thirty-six, we uh, we pretty efficiently moved a third of that group to at grade level or above. Um, so again, this is our promise to those students that we will move them to where they need to be with concerted efforts, focused work, and a, and a clear plan. I wanted to share a little bit of general numbers around other areas where we're providing multi-tiered systems of support for our students. I think you've heard us talk about putting these areas in academics, socio-emotional needs and attendance. And you could see in any one of these interventions, the larger bar represents the total number of students in that intervention. And the blue bar represents students that have had success and or exited out of a provided intervention. So what that tells us and that makes us excited for is that we can see that some of our interventions are working really well, and some of them need reflection and refinement, which is what we're all about. So the work on the blue end makes me feel good and validated, but the work on the burgundy end really drives what we need to do as next steps for our, our future tiered interventions. So you can see we, we had some success, but we will still continue to do our work around that. And in closing, I'd just like to circle back around the idea of the power of saying yes and allowing innovative thought and opportunity to take risks. And that truly lends to ongoing reflection and refinement. But more importantly, I think it sets a powerful example for the young adults we're ready to work, where we get to work with because they get to see that, you know, failure and challenge is okay. It makes us better learners in the long run. And um, that is concludes what I had to share tonight.
Thank you. Board members, you have any questions or comments?
Dr. Allman, thank you for your presentation. Um, really a pleasure, and I liked how you condensed it into a really nice um, format. I had one comment on goal two, which was regarding the indirect and direct services. I just wanted to commend your team to that um, shift, you know, pretty large shift, and I really appreciated the year-over-year comparison. That was easy to see that some of the things that you might be going for, like that RAMP certification, drive changes in your practice, and you're able to measure them and then say, wow, look, look what we've done. So I really appreciated that.
Thank you.
And um, I did want, I, I know we, we won't see you necessarily again this year, but I'd love to keep um, an eye on the, the AP pass rates and enrollment on both sides of the coin. How many students are challenging themselves and enrolling in those courses? What that looks like year over year now that we're in a little bit more of a steady state post-pandemic, and then what the pass rates look like, so.
Thank you. Well, we will definitely be monitoring that.
I just have a quick comment. It's really interesting, and I'm just starting to learn about what's going on in all the different schools. So thank you very much. Um, one of my questions about the AP pass rates that I would love to see in, in future um, reports is not just who gets a three and above, but where we are in terms of the fours and the fives. And what, I think that we focus rightly on the kids who are really struggling to come up. But I also am curious about like, what do we do in terms of lifting everyone up? So if you're in the third, you know, like not the top group, but maybe the third group, what are we doing to bring those kids who are getting a three up to a four, or, you know, so we're not focusing solely on, you know, o- obviously those are kids we really need to focus on. So I get that. But um, I would just love to hear more about sort of all groups.
I agree. O- one of the things I think I'm most proud of is even with our smaller graduation enrollment, that we have a, a really proportionally higher enrollment in AP courses, which to me is the first step in really, and, and I think it's reflected also in the number of exams that we've ordered for this year. Um, because i- it really provides an opportunity just uh, i- i- eliminates gatekeeping to get into AP classes. Students, we really want to have students take classes, not necessarily because they're AP or not, but because they have an interest and enjoy them, or they want to explore if they have an interest or enjoy them. So I'm really excited about um, us, like, I came in here six years ago. Jason gave me the permission to really kind of allow access and maximize access to student, to AP coursework. And then I think the next best compliment is that the growth in confidence of taking tests is there. And I hope what you, I hope what we can find is that we will continue to have that growth, but also more growth and, and improvement in our scores.
I really enjoyed your presentation as well.
Thank you, Dee.
And um, I am excited about our flow program, and I hear a lot about that from students and people in the community and was able to go to the film festivals, see some of their artworks, see some of the, some of the shorts. Um, and I have read now a couple of the books that they're reading. But I would really like more information about that because I feel like uh, um, when people in the community talk to me about it, I, I don't feel totally confident on everything that's going on. So maybe next year or sometime to have more flow information would be helpful for me as far as promoting the program, which is one of my jobs. And um, ramp sounds great and really better serving our students. So thank you.
Yeah, we're excited around that work too.
Well done.
Thanks, Member Kelly.
I just had a quick question um, on the areas of focus that the percentages, did you disaggregate on the grade levels also? As I was just assuming that as students go through, there would be more of a shift to the college information. But this is something you were, eh, that you're doing on a new basis.
Are you talking about the needs assessment?
Yes.
Yes, actually, we did look at that, and we had started individual group work around some of our higher needs regardless of grade, but also found that we could really do some skill building groups around specific needs, not always by grade, but just a group of people. If we noticed a trend in a group of people needing a specific support, we were able to address that.
Thank you. We have a couple of public hearings. Do we have any public input on that at this point?
None received.
It takes place during the public hearing, but I, I don't see any cards down there, so. First, we have six A's, a public hearing, presentation of the Laguna Beach United Faculty Association and Laguna Beach Unified School District's Joint Proposal for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six Collective Bargaining Agreement and Announcement of a Requisite Public Hearing. So I opened the public hearing at, I can't read the time, six forty. Any comments from board members of the audience?
No comments received?
Student reps, you have any comments? And I would close the public hearing. And move to six B, Public Hearing Presentation of the Classified School Employees Association, Chapter one three one, and Laguna Beach Unified School District's Joint Proposal for the reopeners to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four Collective Bargaining Agreement and Announcement of a Requisite Public Hearing. And I opened the public hearing. Do you have any comments? Also can come from board members.
I don't have any um, comments from members of the public.
Then I would close the public hearing. And we move to our information items. First is Business Services. Mr. Dixon with a monthly financial update.
Thank you, President Vickers. Um, everything in the report is through the end of December. So it's a monthly financial report through the end of December two thousand twenty-two. Couple of things I would like to point out. On the very first page, you'll notice revenues are tracking slightly higher than projected based on our budget. Um, and the expenditures are tracking about, just about what we expected in our budget um, with regard to November and December, um, having the less expenditures than expected in November, um, balanced out by a little more expenditures in December. So even though the trend is off a little bit, it, it equals out. So the expenditures are right on track to what we expected. However, if you go to page three, it's the general fund revenue summary page. You'll notice that the um, actual received revenues are quite a bit higher than the projected budget. Um, there's a reason for that, and the reason is because at the adopted budget, we did not assume two very large restricted funding sources, one being the Arts Music Discretionary Block Grant, the other being the Learning Recovery Block Grant. As of December, we had received half of the apportionment for each of those grants. Those are restricted funds, and that equated to about one point two million dollars. So our revenues are tracking a little higher than we had projected in it, and that's based on our property tax coming in about half a percent higher than we thought. Um, but when you look at the larger increase that's represented in the monthly financial as of December, I just want to make sure you that I highlight that those are restricted funding sources, and that's what's driving that larger revenue than you typically expect. Well, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dixon? Thank you very much. As always, a extremely comprehensive report. We have um, information on instruction. Eight A mid-year report update on the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three local control and accountability plan. You have a public comment on this?
None received.
Thank you.
All right. Well, this is going to be a, a team effort uh, tonight. So we'll have uh, several folks up at the podium. Um, but I get to, I had the privilege of kicking it off tonight. So um, this is uh, our mid-year update. Um, first, I just want to thank uh, the board um, and our LCAP committee because um, this really stems from the Local Control Accountability Plan that we adopted. And uh, we had obviously students and parents involved in that, and this is part of just kind of tracking um, where we're at. We'll obviously provide a more comprehensive update at the end of the year. Um, but it really helps us stay focused as a school district and school sites around the goals uh, that we've agreed upon. And um, so, and applying some metrics to that. So with that, um, who has a clicker? Click it along for me. One of you just clicked the slides for me, if you don't mind. Wait on. All right. So right now, uh, we're tracking about twenty-four hundred students, a little over twenty-four fifty-six. Of that, three percent uh, English learners, uh, two percent uh, immigrant students, ten percent with, suits with disabilities, and twenty percent economically disadvantaged. If you remember, um, about two years ago, so prior to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, they changed the way by which um, families could um, check that box, and no longer did you have to provide uh, income verification. So like most many districts uh, in Orange County, we had, we saw a, a doubling of the number of, of folks that qualified because about ten to twelve percent of our students direct certify, meaning that comes from the state because they're maybe on um, kind of uh, Cal, CalFresh or some other subsidized uh, service, and then the others um, just sell certified, right? But again, you don't have to provide that uh, proof any longer. So the number does uh, has popped up. Um, however, uh, if you look, you know, more or less, uh, the last two years, we've remained relatively the same in terms of percentages. So uh, very small numbers um, uh, of students in most of those categories, with the exception, obviously, is the economically disadvantaged group, so. In terms of district goals, um, again, as I was referencing earlier, um, you'll see this again in a Venn diagram with a little more detail, but uh, our goals have remained pretty um, consistent uh, the last couple of years. Uh, developing college and career readiness uh, skills with our students, really focusing on social emotional competencies and self-identity, and ensuring that we have safe and equitable and inclusive schools. And I think you've seen this um, over and over again, which I appreciate the, the school sites as well, um, embedding it in their presentations because it really is what we as a district are doing um, on behalf of our students. And it is nice to see and hear uh, how each site is, is kind of moving that work along. Um, I think, you know, we all recognize that from elementary to secondary, they have different challenges that they face um, and how they navigate those um, uniquely at their school sites around their leadership is, um, it's nice to see, and I thank Dr. Allman for providing that. And as I mentioned, the, the Venn diagram, the priorities, how they overlap. Um, we'll be talking more about this uh, in greater detail um, in the next few slides as we kind of get through. But the goals really have remained relatively the same. And I know that we've talked about how um, the goals somewhat, you could move some of the subsections within each other goal area, right? So multi-tier systems of support also is part of our social emotional competence and self-identities. So these are the buckets they wish they lived, but I want to be clear that they, they do overlap, and hence the, the Venn diagram shows a little bit of that, that the overlap that they all do somewhat um, interchange, right, and intertwine. So I want to say this is, I didn't pick this photo, just so you know, you might see a resemblance. Uh, somebody else did. Um, but uh, I'm sure my son's probably cringing as he's watching. Um, so as we talked about the graduate profile, and I look forward to providing a little more detail about this in a, um, a future board workshop. But we've been working on this over the last uh, year plus um, with our LCAP committee. It was actually one of the outcomes that the, the committee felt like we really needed to start talking about what do we want our students to be able to do. Um, we've talked about with our students themselves, talked about this with our student advisory committee, with student senate. Um, and uh, really kind of looping out, and where we've landed more or less is we want our students to be empowered learners, um, creative problem solvers, effective communicators, uh, constructive collaborators, and empathetic citizens. And um, we have gone round and round with language, um, with trying to make sure it's meaningful to our students. Um, and because really they're the ones that ultimately need to understand what it means to them. And so, you know, Chad's taken, talked to middle school students, and so what does this mean to you? And we as adults sometimes create a definition that we think it means, and then we ask our, our students, and, and they have a completely different perspective of what that means. So uh, we are, uh, again, we're looking forward to bring it forward uh, in, in greater detail. But this is starting to guide some of the work as we're thinking about what are those things that we want our students to be able to do? Um, and what do those learning experiences look like? And so as Dr. Allman mentioned, kind of relevancy um, is really important. Authentic, um, inclusive and equitable. Are we reaching all learners when we, when we're trying to get students to be effective communicators? Personalized, um, obviously very important for students because that's where relevancy lies as well. So it's not, um, they're not doing school as Dr. Allman points out, they're really engaged. Um, and then it's competency-based. So it's not just about the grade, it's about the skill that they walk away with when they, um, ultimately when they finish and wrap up. So with that, I'm going to have, Dr. Canterbury's going to come up and kind of walk through some of the goals, and then I think she'll hand it off to Dr. Keller and I think Dr. Mayberry at some point.
Thank you, Dr. Valoria. Good evening, members of the governing board. Thank you so much for allowing me to join you this evening to share some of the amazing progress that our students have made at the midpoint of the school year. We're going to start off tonight by talking about goal one. Goal one addresses college and career readiness, which encompasses both student academic achievement and the essential competencies described in our learner profile. A few of the highlights we'll be sharing with you this evening are continued growth in English language arts and mathematics across grades kindergarten through eighth as measured by the I-Ready Diagnostic Assessment. Low DNF rates across all courses and subject areas at the secondary level. And finally, new strategies combined with established pathways to effectively connect learning to real-world scenarios and experiences. We're going to dive into our I-Ready Diagnostic data updates. The I-Ready Diagnostic Assessment continues to serve as a universal screening tool and progress monitoring indicator to help our instructional teams pinpoint student needs down to the subskill level. This enables teachers to plan and then adjust instruction with timely and actionable data and to see a complete picture of student performance and growth. I-Ready data is used in conjunction with multiple measures to determine not only which students may be ideal candidates for targeted and supplemental academic interventions, but also those students who would benefit from layered challenge or enrichment opportunities. In LBUSD, our kindergarten through eighth grade students participate in I-Ready Diagnostic testing three times per year, and our ninth and 10th grade students participate in testing at the beginning of the year and the end of the year. At the mid-year point, we are pleased to report a 5% increase, and this accounts for 65 students who have advanced to the tier one and two levels, meaning these students likely no longer evidence and need for intensive individualized academic supports outside of their core classroom. So that accounts for 94% of our student population in grades kindergarten through eighth. The goal when administering the I-Ready Diagnostic Assessment is always to increase the number of students in the tier one within to above grade level band and to decrease the number of students that you see in the approaching and below grade level bands. Those are the two represented by the yellow and red lines. As you can see, our progress is going in the right direction with students improving and increasing the number of students who are moving into that green within to above grade level band. We have reached an impressive growth point at this point of the year with 19% of K8 students moving into the tier one band from the beginning of the year, which now brings our tier one overall total to 75% of our students assessed. Our math progress looks identical to our reading progress in terms of the number of students who placed in the tiers one and two bands, as well as the students who placed in the tier three band. The growth in math from fall to winter was 7%, meaning that 96 students have now exited the tier three intensive intervention level since the beginning of the year. When looking at math performance trends across grade level spans, we again are pleased to report to you increases in the number of students performing within the tier one band, receiving meaningful benefit from their core classroom instruction. We also see decreases across the board in students not yet scoring within grade level range on content standards. Collectively, an additional 13% of students across grades K8 have now reached our target tier one band as compared to the beginning of the year. This data tells us that not only are our students responding positively to high-quality, standards-based, differentiated core instruction, but also that our academically-focused, multi-tiered systems of support, including supplemental targeted and reading math academic interventions, are effective in addressing knowledge gaps and meeting each individual student where they are. Through the development of personalized growth targets and individualized learning goals, every student's progress is celebrated. We look forward to seeing continued growth in the remaining half of the school year. One of the key indicators we also analyze to determine student performance is semester grades. At the conclusion of semester one, Laguna Beach High School grades were higher than any comparable semester year over the past six years. 86% of all grades earned by our high school students were As and Bs, while 4% were D or F grades. Current grades show improvement over last year at this time, in which 7% of all grades were D or F grades, and 82% were A and B grades. At Thurston Middle School, first semester grades were also very strong. 81% of all grades were As and Bs, while 4.5% of all grades were D or F grades. This is comparable with last year's mid-year data, in which 4% of all grades at TMS were D or F grades. School-based interventions for our at-promised students include individual grade counseling, teacher-student work completion plans, executive functioning groups to assist students with organization, planning, and time management, and supplemental academic support to address learning acceleration and recovery have proven effective in supporting students to not only pass their courses, but meet class expectations. LBUSD students have multiple pathways through which to earn college credit. Dual enrollment opportunities allow students to take college courses through partnerships with local community colleges. This is primarily Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College. Classes are completed either onsite at LBHS, online, or at a local college campus. So far this year, between July and December, 135 students have earned a collective 428 early college units through dual enrollment. Another early college credit option for LBUSD students is through CTE pathways. There are currently 11 different CTE UC honors classes offered on campus at LBHS and an additional 14 different UC honors CTE courses offered off-campus. To date, we anticipate a total of 177 LBHS students will earn a combined 527 college units through CTE courses this year. CTE offers students a unique opportunity to explore careers and cultivate skills that are transferable and relevant to specific disciplines. This video highlights a day in the life of one of our LBHS CTE students.
Hi, I'm Caleb Denzmore. I'm a senior at Laguna Beach High School, and welcome to my CTE graphic design pathway classroom. So every single day we come into class, we start the class with a group discussion, a meeting with the project board out. Project board is basically like a Google Sheets of like all the projects that teachers have requested our class to do. So instead of the school district going out and like buying these things for like thousands of dollars, we spend the thousands of dollars on equipment in the classroom and then make it ourselves. So over time, it's a good investment, and we save school a bunch of money. Basically, kids will sign up for a project that are on the project board, depending what their personal preference or passions are. Like some people like using Illustrator, some like making stickers with Corel Draw. There's usually a deadline, and then we just complete it by the deadline and email the teacher ourselves, which is really good that we get to email the teacher ourselves, who teaches us how to like stay in contact with clients and like learn how to work with deadlines. Another favorite machine of mine that we have here is the Loza cutter. Right now, I'm working on a job with the College and Career Center, Ms. Gregory. She's a wonderful lady. I'm working on a couple of signs for her that say, "You are amazing, you are loved, you are inspiring." Making them out of wood, spray painting them, welding them together, and deliver them to her. The first football game for my school was about like two weeks ago, and cheerleaders desperately needed some, their names on their cheerboxes. Since we only had three days, Mr. Wukov and me and a couple of other students chipped in and then decided to really work hard on it because it was pretty cool for the school. We needed it to show some school spirit for the cheerleaders. One of the major skills I'm taking with me into my future because of the CTE course is the skill of using Adobe Illustrator. Adobe Illustrator is a very powerful tool that you could use to create all sorts of logos for future businesses. They're like all sorts of like website designs, literally anything that you need to graphically design, you could do on Illustrator and using it. And then the ability to lead others and communicate with clients, deadlines. Because leading a grouping, like communicating with the group, they're like overall work on the same project and get the same project done where everyone gets the reward, like everyone has completed. And working together is a very neat experience that I will definitely take with me.
Thank you. Earlier tonight, Dr. Allman shared with you specific outcomes from last year's advanced placement exams, which provide a third pathway for students to earn early college credit. To date, we currently have 945 AP course enrollments across 22 unique courses. This is an increase of 96 enrollments from this same time last year. Of the current LBHS population, 47% or 434 students have taken at least one AP class during their high school careers thus far. This is an increase from last year's student body, in which 44% of enrolled students had taken at least one advanced placement class. With the goal of engaging and empowering students through high-interest, relevant, and meaningful learning experiences, LBUSD launched K-12 unit design opportunities for teachers this fall. Currently, 61 teachers across all grade spans in the district have come together to create elevated units of study that have generated excitement and buzz in classrooms across the district and hopefully a few dining room tables as well. Our spring cohort will soon launch and will continue the practice of infusing creativity, collaboration, problem-solving, and other key learner competencies into everyday classroom instruction. Our final update for goal one involves the development of our new after-school and summer enrichment program for students in grades TK through five, excuse me, TK through six. The LBUSD Expanded Learning Opportunities Program in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Laguna Beach allows students from unduplicated groups to participate in no-cost extended school day and school year activities, addressing the needs of the whole child, academic, social, emotional, and physical, all while building meaningful connections with both peers and trusted adults in a safe, supervised, and most importantly, super fun setting. We wish to extend our sincere appreciation to the governing board for your support of both our new and continued actions around college and career readiness to ensure an exceptional educational experience for all LBUSD students. I would now like to introduce my colleague, Dr. Michael Keller, who will speak about our second priority goal area.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Canterbury. That was excellent and informative. I too want to share my appreciation to the Board of Education. I'm going to be sharing about goal two. You've heard the title many times, but I really want to sincerely thank you for your shared belief with me and all of the leaders here and the teachers and staff who believe that social emotional health is really the foundation for academic success. And so I want to be sharing some highlights. We look at this in a lot of different ways. I think Dr. Valoria shared very nicely that that some of these categories can be, fall under different areas. But I look forward to sharing some of the, some of the notable mid-year highlights. First, we're going to be talking about four different elements today. And the first one is that we've realized a reduction in student suspension and discipline referrals when compared to last year, so we'll highlight that. School sites are prioritizing positive, PBIS, we love our acronyms, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, and restorative practices. It really is about building healthy culture and climate in schools, and we'll highlight a little bit about that work. And we have, we definitely want to share some more information. I think Dr. Allman shared nicely about the high school experience with additional counseling some more, but we really have made a concerted effort to have a lot of vertical support and work around our school counseling programs to really support student health and wellness, academic success, and college and career readiness. And then lastly, we want to talk through attendance. It's still been really greatly impacted by health issues. We had the triple demic, and I'll, and I'll start the next segment with, with the review of attendance data for mid-year this year. So on the right-hand side, you can see the notable information about the suspension rates. Mid-year last year, we had approximately 1.4% of our students, we had a 1.4% suspension rate by January of 2022. And this year in January 2023, that, that rate has dropped to 0.8%. We continue to always look at ways to have alternatives to suspension. We want students to, well, first and foremost, prevent disciplinary situations, but when they come up, we want to use lots of restorative methods to try to ensure that students are learning from those experiences and restoring those relationships. In the middle, we continue to realize a very high rate of chronic absenteeism. That's the 10% or more of school days of absences. And so this is not just a Laguna Beach issue, this is a state of California issue, and we're realizing it nationally that, that there's students that continue to be out of school for a variety of reasons. We think health factors explain a lot of it. However, our work is not just to admire the problem, it's really to continue the outreach to parents, set this as a goal, have site-level problem-solving meetings, and then if that doesn't resolve, work with our district-level resolution process and the district, district attendance review team meetings to help solve those issues. And then on the left-hand side is our average daily attendance rate of 94%. Certainly, we'd like that to be higher as well, but it's, it's part of the, the whole picture of setting goals around attendance. And I mentioned positive behavior interventions and supports. All of our schools are committed to improving the positive student behavior and improving school climate across the district. The PBIS approach is school-wide, it's data-informed, and we provide clear communication and expectations around, around expected behaviors for students. And we want to reinforce those expected behaviors across all settings, whether that's in a classroom or transitioning between classrooms, lunch recess before, after school. We want our students to be leaving us really independent and being able to carry up, carry on conversations and, and be good citizens as they leave. So that's part of the, the culture building. And we want to really focus on social problem solving and building that social competence. And when there are infractions, which happen naturally in, in social environments, we want to use really positive behaviors, positive strategies to correct those transgressions and use restorative approaches. So one of the efforts that we've, we've invested in heavily this year is improving teacher and staff capacity around restorative practices. That's at the elementary and middle school level in particular. We've expanded our partnership with Karen Yonker, who's an expert trainer and professional developer who coaches and helps teachers and staff members to learn about the practices around restorative practices and be able to implement those with fidelity in their classrooms throughout the day and across school settings. So teachers and staff members this year participated in training, coaching, live sessions, side-by-side sessions, classroom sessions, to learn the framework and the language around restorative practices so they can use it independently. And that restorative framework, such as classroom circles or restorative problem solving, helps individuals to improve their social problem-solving skills and try to, try to create the school and classroom environments that we all want. We all want to feel like we belong in school. Students want that. And this gives students an opportunity to really feel like they can work and trust. And this gives students an opportunity to really feel like they can work and trust in relationships with peers and with adults. Let's see, so I want to highlight some of the excellent work that's happening from the school counseling perspective at all of our different levels. We heard some great information from the high school level and I'll highlight that in a minute. But at the TK five counseling level, we have nine school counselors serving our twenty-four hundred fifty some odd students plus a school counselor who's our high, our school, our coordinator of family engagement. We have a school counselor, credential individual who's our coordinator of college and career readiness. I'm a credential school counselor, but also administrator. We have five school psychologists help support school-based mental health. We have three student support specialists who are credentialed social workers serving our students. We have a robust team of individuals serving our students in the prevention. Some of the great work that they do at the elementary level include providing mental health Mondays. We heard some of that from our from our wonderful update from our student board representative. We participate, no, no place for hate activities on campus, school-wide prevention activities. Both elementary school sites have a have a peer assistance leadership program where students participate in learning leadership skills, communication and working through, supporting each other through problem solving and social problem solving on campus. Lots of great things happening there. At the middle school level, the addition of us of a of another counselor has really helped us to be able to provide that individualized service and support to students. School counselors focus on academic, personal, social and college and career readiness. The middle school also is is interested in seeking ramp certification. That's really the end of a long process. You build a, you build a stakeholder team, you set goals. We started goal-setting this last summer with some additional summertime. Thank you for that support with from the board to do that work. And that that goal-setting maps out all of our priorities, how are we going to support vulnerable populations, how are we going to extend learning for all students? We've also worked to implement Naviance this year so students can get college career and life readiness standards, learn their strengths, be able to map out their their life in as they transition into high school. Vertical planning is really been important at those critical transition points from fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth grades. So we're trying to really think about every every pain point that a student might experience and be able to support resilience and support students to look to build those skills to be successful at each of those points. And then at the high school, we heard some great things. There's been a lot of direct touch points that really has been an emphasis on direct services rather than those indirect services. That is a big highlight, I think, and we're going to continue to push that, push that as a priority going forward. I just do want to note that our our counselors are such a critical element of being at the center when when cases get complex for students, being able to meet students where they're at with dignity and respect and engage families to really help to confidentially problem solve around some really complicated issues. And so I I am so appreciative of this incredible team. And again, for all the support for the services that are available to our students in the going to be gentrified. So thank you. And I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Chad Mayberry.
Thank you. So I'll share a little bit of some updates around goal three, really is around is safe, equitable, inclusive schools. At the heart of this goal is really a personalized learning system, but also personalized support and intervention. And so a big part of that for us really at the middle of it is our MTSS, where school teams get together weekly at a minimum and try to proactively address student needs, sometimes individually, sometimes by class, by grade level, school-wide. It's a process that we have been fortunate to have the support of the board to continue to focus on. Often some things like this get shifted aside to the next initiative. And the high school, the high school, middle school, elementary schools have all done a wonderful job of keeping this at the front as we come out of the pandemic and not letting go of it. And you'll see a lot of data has been shown already how important it is that we really personalize the learning and supports. So a couple of key things around key points around goal three. We're still seeing some different opportunity gaps that are persisting for some students that have significant needs, especially around students with disabilities and are multilingual learners with a pandemic have probably the most the most significant impact. We are seeing some growth though, and you saw this earlier, some of these targeted and prescriptive academic interventions have proven effective. We're seeing growth in some of these, especially appreciative at the middle and high school, which are trying to come up with creative solutions within the constraints of a bell schedule. And so we're seeing growth there. And then also we're continuing to prioritize the student wellness and positive relationships. This is, you've heard the the conversation going around in public and nationwide about how important it is students to have that balanced life and that mental health wellness. And so this continues to be probably our highest priority right now. Again, as I said, much of this is centered around the MTSS. This graphic shows that we've worked from the outside and all what we do for all students, what you do for some students, what we do for a few students in the middle. It is built around typically around these cycles in the fall, the winter and spring. There are micro cycles in there between that happen, but that continues on into the summer as well. And so this is a model that our team uses internally to show and think through our approaches and how we want to adjust. We think through our key through eight intervention program, as mentioned earlier. We have had, you know, a little bit over a hundred students served in English in the LA and as well as in math. And we're seeing about half of those show improvement. And so good growth there that are exiting from the program. You know, as this is, this is something intervention program that's live and dynamic. So some kids come in, some kids go out. But seeing this type of growth at the middle of the year is really a good, a good show that we're making some progress. At the English nine level, smaller group of students, but you're assuming that similar growth, 50, 55% of students are exiting after that intervention from the fall. Now, when we look at our multilingual learners, our English learners, similarly, there's a, there's a gap there on the reading side, a little bit larger than math. But this is larger than this, this, this tier three supports, as be too expected at any time, but definitely due to the impact of the pandemic, this is larger than we would hope, we would want it to be in a typical year. Some of the highlights we are doing in this area that are really important, the last, we've continued to update the curriculum and the lessons that we are teaching them. Alexia ELD has been a really good support system that really is personalizing, engaging for students along with the other programs that we've had previously. We've added elevation program, which provides us a live view of the students that may need, but also specific tools that are English that all teachers can use if they have a student who's earning English in their class. And then as far as building capacity of teachers, we've had a lot of success, as mentioned earlier, that through our ELD lunch and learns. And so we're providing these professional learning experiences with teachers during lunch so that we can gauge and have these very personalized learning experiences, but also personalized support for the students. Students with disabilities, that's similar, larger, more students that are in tier three, we're looking at that. But we're still seeing growth. You can see there at the bottom, we've had some 10% growth and 12% in the LA and 12% in math. So we are seeing growth, but this is always our goal every year is to continue to close this gap. Some of the highlights, especially due to the work of Irene and the special education team, I was building these flexible personalized high school courses, or typically called co-teaching, called talk classes. Where we have more than one teacher in there to support and like gives kids access to a rigorous level of learning, but also provide personalized support for that. And so right now we have three at the middle school and six at the high school. We weren't able to do this at the heart of the pandemic. This is expected to grow at both of these at the middle and high school the next year, which we're working on now, along with additional training for the teachers and staff that support these. Students are economically disadvantaged. You'll notice here that these students actually have a much smaller group at the tier three level. So larger than the average, but but definitely smaller. These students are seeing some success. You can see that growth there in the bottom, still showing some growth, four to seven percent for these students. A lot of this work is, as I said, is obviously around very targeted, almost surgical intervention for what students personally need individually or by class. On the other side of that is what we've been talking about, is finding relevant, engaging and learning experiences about what kids want. And so when you look here, you can see a lot of different things that according on campuses, our first generation luncheons with students at the high school, different wellness activities, mental health Mondays. This is especially grows as the kids get older. Kids are exploring things in lower grades. You know, good, for a good example, we have a very robust after-school program at the elementary level. At the middle school, I believe they have seven, up to seventeen clubs, but then they've also added twenty different sports teams. That's doing really, really well. You've heard a lot of thoughts about that. At the high school, I believe there have forty-seven clubs at this point, to go along with their twenty, I believe there's about twenty, twenty-four CIF sanctioned sports somewhere around there, twenty-two, twenty-four sports. And that's just at the varsity level. There's JV, lower level sports, and a few sports that are not sanctioned yet by CIF. You've got the clubs, you have over thirty-five different visual performing arts classes. You have the eight pathways we talked about, twenty-two AP classes. Really getting kids to make those connections of what they're most interested in. And so we're really proud that we're able to continue to offer these to our students at such a small high school, but it makes the learning experience more and more relevant. Another thing to do in this area around parent engagement that was new this year was parent project. And this one with ten-week sessions, really helping students that have to, or parents that are thinking through different difficult tasks or challenges with their own students. And we have had waiting lists on and off of this. In the fall, we had twenty, I believe, in the fall, nineteen in the fall in the first cohort. We have twenty enrolled in the second cohort. And so that's been really exciting to see these parents and it's a, it's a big commitment. There's a commitment for time over ten weeks for parents to do this. And so we're fortunate to be able to provide that thanks to the board's support. We've also did our family outreach. One thing I, we definitely want to highlight is the different ways we are serving our families that are most in need. And we have a hundred, we've served a hundred and thirty families through school supplies and backpacks and eighty-seven families through the holiday supports programs. And then thinking through some key next steps as we kind of wrap up our presentation for here. And as we've said earlier, we've seen some success with our interventions. We're seeing success with academics and behavior and social emotional growth. Attendance, especially chronic absenteeism continues to be a concern, something that we're looking at and truly seeing how what this fits in and and hopeful that that'll get better this spring. The additional counseling has really allowed us to build, improve the connections as well as the culture across campus. Thank you to the board for that. And then the relevant learning experiences, right? So as we build out these these specific interventions that are very targeted, specific, we want this learning experience to be relevant and engaging. And so we're really being able to move that forward through the unit design. Other courses, courses that have been creative such as the AR, where do we restart of practices, which provides that connection and relevancy to kids when when things are challenging for them as well as a profile of a graduate. And so putting teachers through a leadership program that we just started yesterday to help move that work forward and think through what that looks like at all levels of our schools. So with that, we'll kind of wrap up and open it up to any questions.
I thought, I'm from Pennsylvania, and I thought I was living through Groundhog Day because I've seen this all before. I even saw that video, that young man helping the cheerleaders. And then I figured it was on the two-ten weekly update you gave us, you gave us all this information, but you had a much better picture on the front. And so that's what really confused me that, and I asked my colleagues if they had seen that video before. They hadn't, but I said, we had to touch it. But it's an exceptionally good report and I didn't want to take a test on it when I read it the first time because there was so much data in there. I thought, how are we ever going to remember all this? But the dog and pony show tonight was spectacular.
So that's, that was good. So first of all, thanks for the report. I thought your report in the fall was terrific also. And so I really, you know, it's very useful and I too appreciated all the, all the data. I have two comments. One is a little bit about semantics, but I think it's important. And I've actually mentioned this to Jason, but I'm going to bring it up here and that is on the graduate profile. I just want to say that when we look at the outcomes that are critical for our students, public education is central to democracy. And when I think about public schooling, I don't think about creating empathetic citizens, which I think is a part of something bigger. I think of creating active and engaged citizens. And it's semantics, but I think it has an important influence on both pedagogy and content. And so, you know, democracy, we could argue is at risk. I would like us to be thinking about pedagogy and content that creates engaged and active citizens because that's what we most need right now. So I know that it's a group report, but I just want to put that out there. The second thing that I want to mention is that I like this tiered system because it's obviously imperative that we collect the kind of data so that we understand. I always goof up which tier is the top and bottom because it's the opposite of AP test scores. So I sometimes, you know, get confused. But I know it's imperative to take students who are in tier three and four and figure out how to bring them up to the average. That's important. And we need data to do that. But I also think about this notion of academic excellence for all. And I don't know that we hear enough about what we're doing about bringing kids in tier two up to tier one and how we're engaging citizens in tier one and two altogether. So what kinds of challenges are we creating for students all the way up and down all the tiers? Because when we start with that circle on the outside that says all, we rightly focus in the middle on the students who need to come up to to at least the average. But it always makes me sort of feel like it's not entirely inclusive of engaging every student and creating, you know, excellence across all tiers, if that made sense. So I just want to throw that out there. And it's part of my interest also in my earlier question about not just what our AP scores are in regard to grade three, but what are we doing in terms of reaching four and five and in terms of academic excellence?
Other board members have questions or comments?
I had a couple of comments. I think I'll start with the iReady data presented to either for Dr. Mayberry or for Dr. Cannonberg. You always do such a nice job with these iReady diagnostics. I'd like to have more information. When you look, fellow board members, at the slope on the K-two band, the third through fifth band and the sixth through eighth band, what I've been seeing over the years is that we make much steeper gains in the earlier grades. And so my question is, is that a nationwide trend? Is it easier to bring kids up to grade level in the earlier grades and that work moves at a faster pace? Because when we get to our sixth through eighth grade band, the slope changes. And it's, it doesn't seem for lack of a lot of really good MTSS work. So that's just a question for a future update, what that looks like, why the the slope starts to decrease in the the rate of change in that green line. And then I'd also really like to see the addition of high school because I know Dr. Allman has been working really hard on getting the iReady data consistently administered at the high school, but we still don't have any data in this format for the high school. We move into grade distribution, which is very different than these normed beginning, middle and end year tests. So we see the Algebra I results at, for example, only twenty-nine percent of our Algebra I students in the green and Joan, that's the top tier, right, the tier one. But at sixth or eighth grade, we're at over seventy-five percent. So that's a huge difference. I might be missing something.
That's just the students that were tested at the intermediate. So the only the thirty kids that were in that DF range were tested.
Yeah.
This time. So you don't have, what you don't have is the fall data compared to the spring data because we haven't given the spring because this high school doesn't do the, they do it twice a year, right? They don't do the the mid-year. But we've been, obviously, I think there's a realization that doing the mid-year for those students that are struggling is a must to really determine what gaps continue to exist for those students. But to your point, we didn't include the fall because we don't have a comparison for spring because we won't have that. We'll give that in June.
Yeah. So just starting to include if we're going to be using iReady, if that's a goal of the district to be using it to inform instruction at the high school level, then we need to start seeing it on some of these charts and not right away. But I feel like we've been talking about it for a couple of these updates and I, I still haven't seen it at the district level. So I liked starting to see it in Dr. Allman's presentation, but that was a comment. And then can I make one more? Should I yield the mic to somebody else? Okay. I have a question on the chronic absenteeism. So it sounds like that's a concern. Um, and I guess I'm wondering if, if we as a district think we'll ever get back to ninety-four percent of our students not being chronically absent? Or if the pandemic and cannabis, like I'm synthesizing what we, we talked about with the adoption of cannabis. I'm synthesizing the pandemic and have, how our students learn and when they're sick, just learning from home and that's okay? Perhaps that's okay because if you look at our A and B rates, they're better than they've ever been, yet we have the worst attendance. Does that make sense to my fellow board members? I'm wondering if that's not the target anymore, what we used to have.
I wish I could say we can't, we could avoid that as a target, but the state requires that we focus on it as a target. It's one of the one, one of the few measures they actually utilize. And in fact, that's one of the measures that has put us in technical assistance at both elementary schools is simply because we have uh student groups, we have, we have such small student groups. So I'll give you an example. Uh, at Almoral, for example, we have a very small segment of students, about fifty students last year that K through five uh were students who were of two um races. But um, and so they were chronically absent. However, because only three through five test um on this monitor balanced, we didn't have enough students to test to get them, ourselves out of the technical assistance because the state says you had one indicator that was at the lowest tier. Well, but we only had one indicator because there weren't enough kids to give us two indicators. If we had five more kids test, we would have not been in technical assistance because of that. So the state's very confused. The, I've actually brought it up several times and brought it to our lobbyists more recently. AXA has been, the administration association's bringing it up, the school board association's bringing it up. And it's really the state's attempt um to create a one-size-fits-all approach around attendance. We all recognize and none of us argue that, that we want to get kids back in class because they learn best when they're in class. There's no question. However, in the face of a pandemic, using one year's worth of data around chronic absenteeism to put schools in technical assistance, uh, including the, you know, top test score schools in the county, doesn't really indicate that it's a valid data point. That being said, as I started my original statements, the state doesn't care. The state says this is an area you must focus. The reason our data looks the way it does at this point is remember we've been through half the year. The first half of the year, we hit, as Dr. Keller mentioned, we had a triple whammy. We had students out for the flu, students out uh with um, you know, respiratory infections. And we had COVID, COVID is still not gone and it was definitely not gone in the fall. That being said, we're hopeful that spring will be a better indicator of where we're headed. Um, and so as the number of days that we get now to grow to double is our comparison, our hope, our expectation is, because we're not seeing the triple pandemic that we saw in the fall, that the ratio of attendance will improve. But to your point, it, it isn't the most valid data point when you look at achievement because our achievement continues to grow. I would say though, one of the areas that we're focused on is that when you look at our groups that are not achieving at the highest level we would like them to achieve at, their attendance is, is poorer than potentially the majority, right? So they might be, their chronic absenteeism a little higher. So working on making sure that, you know, our most impacted groups, our most um disaggregated groups that are struggling, right? That, that have that learning gap, that, that opportunity gap that we have there. Making sure they're in school is really paramount because they need that intervention. So while I agree with you that, yeah, it doesn't really make a ton of sense that, you know, there, that it's a one-size-fits-all approach that the state has taken related to attendance. We were actually told originally that we wouldn't have qualified for the elementaries. But then all of a sudden, you know, lo and behold, they, they sent out a, a notice and it's, I mean, you're talking more schools in uh different statuses in the state of California than ever before because of the way they decided the eleventh hour to make some changes and adjustments to their calculations. So um I, uh, Dr. Canenberg did her due diligence, contacted the CDE um and the assessment side of the house. And um we received basically a response that says, yes, we recognize that small schools like yours are going to be impacted differently than larger schools because you have smaller cohorts of kids. But accountability shouldn't be based on the size of your school, right? It really should be based on the data that we have. And so I think we're really proud of the data we have or that we're seeing this, the movements of these student groups that are, that, you know, have these areas of deficiencies that we're working towards and implementing. That's the goal, right? And so I think to your point, remember Osborne, tracking that information over time is what really is the key. And I, I'll, I'll make sure that staff provide kind of a general update as to why K-two, I think you see larger growth, like that it shoots up. And then you have the, it's not as significant as you get into the, the, the upper grades. That's a great question. So we'll, we'll make sure we provide some, some context there.
Thank you. Yeah, and it sounds like attendance will improve for the second semester just based on.
That is our expectation, yes.
Okay, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Questions from board members or comments or?
I was wondering about kids at the bottom. The five percent. I understand, but you keep talking about the kids at the top. The five percent with Ds and Fs, is there any correlation with the group that are English learners, immigration students, students with disabilities or economic disadvantaged?
Yes, there is some in there um for those students. Uh, and there's other students that just have general disengagement, right? And so um that have other things going on, whether it could be mental health issues, could be family concerns. So it tends to be a mix, but yes, some, a lot of the kids that, that are struggling with the Ds and Fs are something that we, that fall into some of those groups, uh, that's lens, but also through social emotional.
Thank you.
Dr. Florrie, could you put, I know you've done it before, the chronic absenteeism, we have a ninety percent figure, but in a number, it's a small number of days that puts a student in that category, correct?
Right, well, it's, yeah, it's, it's ten percent. And so when this was done in December, we were at eighty, about eighty days. So uh, so, so they were absent, um, you know, eight or more days at that, by December, they were chronically absent.
Then my only, asking that, my only point is that a student who gets pretty sick is going to get in that category pretty quickly.
If you're quarantined due to COVID for two weeks, you're, in the first semester, you're chronically absent. Yeah. And it doesn't mean whether, chronically absent has nothing to do with whether they're excused or not by a doctor, right? It's just total absences.
And I think that perhaps I would like to think that some of it is maybe our parents are more cautious in uh keeping kids home when they're sort of minorly sick or they would have sent them up to school before because that's more important now than it, than it was before. I just, a simple question. When you, the, the three groups that you spoke about, Dr. Mayberry, there's no crossover, those are three distinct groups?
No, there are, there is some crossover students. So you could be, you could be a student that's economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities, yeah.
Okay, so the data, we have their data in both.
Yeah.
Okay, and then on the first page, when you, when it separates out immigrant students, but they're put together as English learners or not?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Potentially. That's right. And I just a curiosity because I, um, I think things have changed over the years. We are dealing with multiple second languages? Multiple second languages?
Yeah, I mean, obviously it, um, the number of EL students, English learner students in our district has declined significantly over time. I think that's a, um, it's probably a larger discussion around housing prices and affordability, right? But uh those students that we do have, I mean, we still have a predominant um second language is, is Spanish. However, the, the other languages um that we're seeing um run the gamut. Um, and they're, they're creeping up, right? Because um, so we're seeing, you know, I think German, Chinese, um, French, Russian as examples of some of the languages that we're seeing more of. But uh, but as a total population, that, that population is, has shrunk a, a lot. I think when I first started here is probably um at least double, if not maybe even triple. At one point, maybe nine, nine percent, somewhere in that range. Not, I don't think it was double digits, but we have seen a precipitous decline. So it does make it for an interesting um uh opportunity when you have such small numbers of students. So you might have three in one grade level. So a critical mass of a, of a newcomer program, right? Whereas if, you know, in Irvine, you'd have, you know, you could have many and develop a really strong program that, you know. But we have such small numbers, so we're doing very unique programming. Um, and I think actually uh Ms. Hopper made the comment to elevation and some of the work we're doing there. A lot of this is trying to individualize their, their programming dependent on their need. And thankfully, there's some great technology, but you need, you're, I mean, that teaching side is so important. And so you got here, who's been fantastic, she does such great work with our staff. Meeting the needs of all of those students. And those are just really good practice anyways for all students. So when you train the general education teacher in that area, the, the impact is, is on all, all students, not just the students who have that need because they're just best practices and instruction, so.
Thank you. Thank you all for an excellent report, excellent mid-year update. Uh, I was impressed with the amount that was put in, in the update that we had. Thank you.
Didn't want to get it all at once. I figured like if I gave it to you all the night, it would be a, a probably a, a lot to the dog and pony show. Having the data behind the scenes, have the essay first and then have the picture second, you know, trying to scaffold learning, right?
And you can give Dr. Kelly a take-home test. Yeah, we moved to action items. Our first is uh nine A, business services, um approval of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four UBL, UB, LBUSD comprehensive district and school safety plan. Is there public comment on this item?
None received.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Bickers. The plan comes before you for, goes into effect for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, so for next school year. It's the same that was presented at last meeting in January. Uh, the major updates are the communication section and the appendix at the end for the uh technology services standards, the cybersecurity standards. Um, we have not received any questions or comments. But one thing I would like to say, although we brought it for information and action tonight, we are never opposed to receiving comments or questions or feedback related to safety. So please, uh, anyone out there that has any concerns or issues, never reach out to hesitate to our business office so that we can incorporate them into our uh safety practices and studies. So that, happy to take any questions.
Questions?
I just have a comment. I, when I met with the combined um PTA uh group, I, I pointed out to them that this was available for comment and where you could find it. And I'm sorry that no one responded or they felt confident in us. And I also did it with the high school PTA parents. So I think we, we, on all fronts, we, we got the message out that we were looking for, for feedback.
Yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Kelly. And uh Ms. Webber also added a survey link in our, it's a wrap link. So we, we, I think we've put out enough mediums to capture the feedback. So we're hopeful that it's the confidence in the plan, but uh, like I said, we're always welcome to feedback and questions.
I wanted to make a comment too on the um responsiveness that we get when we bring up safety concerns. Um, I had asked about the um state of the AEDs um on campus just out of curiosity as a learning exercise when we were reviewing this. And we always get really good feedback and we get updates. So I think as board members, we receive a lot of safety information in a lot of different um formats of which could possibly be consolidated into this plan. Um, but I do appreciate just being able to ask safety questions when they come up. Different things happen throughout the year that we hear about and we want to um ask about them, so thank you for that.
I asked about the um, the swimming pool not having one listed. But I would found out that it was this, the city was responsible for that. But I think it should be listed on our list and say that it's the city's um because, because there definitely should be one.
Yeah, we could put, you know, uh, city maintained, right, for, for sure.
No other questions in it? Ask for a motion, please. Any further discussion? Thank you. All in favor? Oh, student rep, sorry, I have, I left you out the last time. On, uh, all in favor? Aye. Carries five oh. Sorry, I confused that by having to backtrack with the student that I neglected. We have um item ten, action item, technology approval of purchase of phone equipment through resilient communications. Any public comment?
None received.
Thank you. And this is, is Mike presenting this?
I'll, I'll just take, um, so we uh, we had our last phone upgrade in twenty fifteen. Obviously, as we all know, technology changes quite a bit. We do still use phones, I mean, it's amazing how some people think it is. And they are really important um for, for us to have uh the most up-to-date phone system. So um we believe that this would be um in the best interest of the school district, both from a safety perspective, but also from um a, an interface perspective. We do continue to pay um about sixty-three-hundred dollars a year for the kind of voicemail component. So uh if we were able to move to this new system, we would no longer be paying for that third-party software. So um happy to take any questions or if there's something too technical, I'll call on Mr. Morrison back there in the corner.
Questions?
It's not too technical. How long do we expect the, this phone system to last? What's the life expectancy? Thank you.
Any other questions? Ask for a motion? Second. Any discussion? Student vote? All in favor? Aye, oppose, carries five oh. We have um action item superintendent. The board minutes is we have a member who needs to abstain. Uh, approval of February second, twenty-twenty-three board meeting minutes. Any public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just, um, I believe uh Member Perry was traveling and thankfully she was able to make it back. I know she had some headwind potentially coming back from a short trip. It sounds like it was an adventure. But uh this is for the February second meeting.
Correct. Send a, a motion, please?
Moved.
Student vote? Board members? Aye. And? Member Perry is abstaining. Thank you. We have our consent calendar next. We have um any public comment on the consent calendar?
No members of the public that I see wishing to speak to these?
We have a number of items on the consent calendar. Are any board members wishing to pull an item? Items C through R. I see none. So I'd ask for a motion then to approve consent calendar items C through R. Thank you. Student? Board members, all in favor? Aye, oppose, carries five oh. We move to our governance section and our first item thirteen A, discussion and approval of LBUSD board governance protocols. Any public comment?
No.
Thank you. Yeah, I think so. Would you like them up on the screen? Okay. Well, since we had this in our study session, we went through them and then we added some. And so, and then there has been some um board member suggestions and some edits. So um I guess I would just say, you know, go through them and see if anyone has a specific question, bring it forward and then we will discuss those that seem to have more, more comment than newer ones.
I have a couple of specific questions. One is um what's the procedure to enforce these protocols?
Can I give a simple answer? I mean, personal integrity and responsibility to the district as a, as an elected member.
So it's, it's not like others, not like other policies or state law, there's no. actually no legal authority for.
A lot of them reflect policy. Which we're bound to uphold that because the policies are based on law or codes. So it's not arbitrary. I mean, these are not arbitrary.
Well, for me, I look at I don't want to judge my fellow board members on, on some of these. For instance, um, I don't wanna say if somebody is informed enough or not. If somebody is trustworthy enough, if they're courteous enough, if they have a relentless commitment as a moral imperative. I mean, those seem like judgments and arbitrary and not something that we should be deciding about each other, but that is voted on by the public.
Well, I think what our purpose of this was is that we've, we're committing to these as standards that we want to uphold. And it's not a matter of judging someone else. It's just that we put these forward as the level we'd like to achieve.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to second that. When I read these, I don't think about trying to judge you. I think this is the job I have to do if I want to serve the district in the best way possible. I have to be a good citizen. I have to be prepared. I mean, it's, these strike me as minimum expectations for being on a school board as an elected representative, right? Or an elected, it's not quite a representative, but a board member.
Well, in the past, these have been judged.
So you're actually looking right now at the pay under unity of purpose on the.
Yeah, I al, I, I also have an issue with, we speak with one voice once decisions are made. We collectively support the inflammation, implementi, implementation and the work of the board. I think I, I don't think this is the um, constitutional. I think that.
Member Perry, can, can I just interject quickly just so I could maybe set up some framework around these? I think um, almost every, if not all, school boards have a set of governance protocols that are developed collaboratively amongst their board members that are our expectations for how we want to act and are, are also working agreements on just day to day. How do we do the job? How do we put something on the agenda? How do we, when we give a report about how long are we expecting? So I, I'd like to kind of reframe these protocols as just a handbook on how we do the job well and what we expect for each other. And my hope is that we could get to a set of protocols that help us do that better. That help us be better board members. When I was at CSBA, a meeting of all the board members in the state of California, they all have a handbook and they have protocols. And every time a board member comes on the board, we had a new, new board member join. We meet to review them and make sure they make sense and they're helpful to us. Instead of getting in our way or being something that we judge each other on. I, I think of them very differently. So I, I want to hear your comments, but I just wanted to put that out there that
Okay.
There's a set of protocols that we all agree to and say this is how we're gonna, this is how we're gonna govern. And this is how we do it day to day and.
And they're not new. I mean, these, these, we're, we're revisiting them. And part of the reason we revisit them this time is with a new member. But you've been involved in revisiting these a number of times. I mean, protocols have existed for the board in this district for a long time.
Right. And I've, we've never, I've never agreed. We've never had a consensus. We've had a board majority, but not a consensus. Yeah. And was the difference between a board majority and a consensus?
The board majority gives a consensus. It doesn't have to be unanimous. It has to be a majority. And you have opted out of, of support before, and that's okay. You can do that. And if you, and as one of these says, if you are voting against something, it's courteous to give your reasons why. So we clearly hear that your, that your opinion is it's not constitutional.
Well, I think the, especially the part about speaking, speaking with one voice. Um, I think I think that um, majority vote does respect the rights of all the members, including those that are in the minority. But like the public, the board doesn't speak or act as one, but as many. And we shift our majority, uh, depending on different issues. Of, of course, if the board members vote on a board action, um, we all have a duty to recognize the legal authority and the effect of the valid board action. But the idea that a member who disagrees with the decision has a duty to support that outcome, I think is anti-democratic and dishonest. And an example would be when we voted on students going back to school. And the mo, board majority did not feel that that was, they wanted the students to go back to school then. I thought they should go back to school. Well, the board majority, obviously, that was what we did. We didn't go back to school then. But if somebody talks to me and says, well, you know, did you, you know, do you believe that the students shouldn't go back to, shouldn't go back to school? I'm not gonna say yes, I believe they shouldn't go back to school. I would say yes, that was the decision the board majority made. That's what we're going to do. But I, the, the, our, our constitution doesn't say we have to lie just because.
What you just said, Dee, is exactly what this would indicate that you do. You shared with someone that the board majority voted.
Yes.
Okay. So that, that is a supportive statement of what the, what you just said as an example.
So I'm not being asked to support a decision of the, I mean, I, obviously, we're gonna go with a decision that the board makes, the board majority makes. But I don't have to say that I personally support it. Correct?
That's not what you just said. So that's different.
Okay, well, and.
What we're trying, trying to do is to support the district with majority decisions.
Right.
And not to have a board member that is in any way feeling undermining that decision by creating that kind of dissension in the community.
But isn't, if we feel really strongly about something and we dissent, that's fine. The board majority votes another way. If it's something we feel really strongly about, I think we have the right to try to bring it up again or do it in another way.
You have the right to vote against it, which is what you've done.
Yes.
And then the district moves on with the decision, which we support that decision. Now, if a person asks you, did you vote for it? You can say, no, I did not vote for it. That's an honest answer.
Or did you agree with it?
Most of our, our votes are public record, so the vote is, is clearly already stated. And you, and you've made your, your major point of dissension during discussion before a vote was taken.
Right. But when you're just out talking in town, people aren't looking at board meeting or the record. They're just asking. Yeah. And that's what I want to make sure I can do. You can say that.
Yeah, I think that's fine. It's public record. And you could say the board deliberated, you know, here were some of the things that came up in the discussion. You know, Dr. Kelly brought up this point, Dr. Valoria brought up that point. I had these feelings. That's the purpose of being on the dais. And then the board took a vote and the vote was, and then that issue is closed. So that the work can then go be executed.
Right.
And you could, that like, like President Bickers is saying, the vote is public. You could say, you could read the whole roll call vote if you wanted, you know.
But I could still advocate for students going back to school, even though the vote said no.
That, once the board has made, has taken action, we've deliberated, we're on the dais, we're deliberating. We're hearing, we're trying to really actively listen to your points and your points and your points and your points and the reports we hear. And then we make the best decision we can. The majority vote is the majority. And then that is what is executed. You can definitely share your, how you voted with the public. But that the work then needs to move on.
This is common uh, practice on, of all boards. It's not something that we came up with. I mean, every board I've served on from national, state and local always has this. And I, like you, had concerns originally about, you know, if I don't agree with this, you know. But I, I, I got to understand as far as that it's, it's, that it's, we represent the public. And.
And the public has varied points of view.
That's right. And, and so, but, but what we do is we try to be unified as far as so that the, the district looks in the best light. Uh, and that it doesn't look like there's a bunch of hacks up here. You know, at each other's necks. And uh, I, I, I think that's the intent of all this is, is to make sure that the district at all times is in the best light of the, of the community.
I think that member Kelly made a, a real strong comment with saying that we receive all the information. We deliberate and we make the best decision we can make. So, you know, and there, and there can be a dissenting vote.
I, I did not like the decision that we allowed our football players to go to a state
Right.
that was homophobic, et cetera, et cetera. But in unity of the board, I didn't leak anything to the newspaper. I didn't write a letter or anything. I supported what my colleagues wanted to do. And so that, that's an example of how I, how I behaved.
I wasn't here for that, but it, so it just strikes me moving forward that the issue here is that you may not like what the board does and you vote in the minority. And you have the right to tell people you voted in the minority. You also have the right to bring that back for an agenda item if there's an opportunity when it comes up again. But I think that is part of what the protocols are. If you didn't like the vote, there are other protocols that guide us in what next steps that we can take in terms of bringing that back to the board at an appropriate time. But going out into the community to try to foam out rebellion against it, I'm not saying anybody's done that because I wasn't here for any of it. But there's a difference between using these protocols, which are in place to ensure that we work together as a board in trying to foment dissension. Right? Which is kind of undermining the work of the school district. So that's what I feel like these protocols are about. I might vote in the minority. I have really strong opinions. I will look at the protocols and figure out when I can bring my minority vote back to the board for an appropriate discussion and vote in the future. You know, those just seem to be protocols that allow us to work together in a way that we trust each other around what we're doing.
Falling up on what Joan was saying, um, what I was upset about, we did bring it back and we changed the protocol. And so that's, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're, we're really saying that the, this is just how we hope each other behave. There isn't, there isn't any authority to punish somebody if they don't.
This is, I mean, it's just, this is, to me, it's kind of like. Kind of funny because this is, I talk with other boards. This is just a document that gets developed each year and everybody gives their input and knows how to do certain things. And then they, they sign it. And when board members come on or off, we review it again. If we need to update things, we agree to it and we sign it because this is our working document on how we're gonna govern effectively. It's not about punishment or judgment. This is about governing effectively and agreeing to it.
But it has been.
We're moving forward. So I would, I'd like to talk about specifics with the protocols. If anyone has questions, comments on these that we worked on at the study session and then as I said, there's been some.
We were asked to send uh, our comments to Victoria or to do it. Uh, and I, I don't know. Did we incorporate any of those or do we need to?
This diagram on number one, correct?
I think even before one, number one, I think Dr. Kelly provided some feedback just on kind of the switching a few of the link, and that's not making some changes to the first page, the unity of purpose section, other than just moving things around to make more cohesive sense. So um, I don't know that those necessarily got reflected in what you have in front of you. But I didn't, there's nothing substantial in it that would cause me to say, oh, we can't, we should, yeah, we can't, we can't not do that. I don't have any, there's just an order of the way he saw it. So.
Are you talking about wordsmithing?
No, not wordsmithing. Even it's just if you look at the first page of unity of purpose.
Okay, here.
Yeah, he just recommended that we reorganize some of it to make better flow. And so we can, you know, that's um, it's not changing anything. It's just a, a flow thing that from a perspective. So yeah, the flows, it's just him moving on a couple of things back and forth. So.
President Bickers, are we going, going through these one by one and just kind of agreeing as we move forward? Or are you asking us to bring any suggestions forward since we've already had this in workshop?
Then in the fourth paragraph, we had a suggestion the members should, or strike should, and the members take notes at the meeting, strike on work of. Then take notes at the meeting outside organize, outside of the organization that would be of interest to the board and shared during the board, strike appropriately there. So those are the suggestions for that area on fifteen attendance at assigned outside organizations, committees or boards.
And Member Perry, fifteen, we added so that we have everybody here, I think you missed the comment. We requested to add it because we are also busy. That if we take a appointment to an outside organization, we really want to respect one another's time. So if they're the appointed representative that they go, they prepare a written report that they can update the organization, whether that's school power, PTA council, you know, community coalition, on the activities of the board that would be relevant maybe to that organization. And then if we're not able to attend, that we definitely notify um, Dr. Valoria, Mrs. Weber and our alternate to make sure that somebody can go. And then if we're not the representative, that we're not going either. Because then if I took time off work to go and attend a meeting and another board member is already there, I'm thinking, why am I here when they're, you know, when they could have just done this for me. So.
And also because if two other board members decided to show up, then it makes a problem.
That too. From a practical standpoint, do you agree with this?
So everybody is agreement with those changes?
I have a question about um, number one and the third paragraph. And so um, I've had this situation where I've, I've sent an email to the superintendent about questions or a position. And I've also blind copied or copied another person. And then he has sent it on to the board president. So then it is a violation of the Brown Act. And if he automatically sends whatever I ask him to the board president, then that takes away my right to send that information or question to another board member. Because I, it can only be shared with one and he's decided he's sharing it with the board president. So this is basically saying, what is it saying? That this superintendent cannot um, forward an email to the board president?
No, I think what, I think what, if I have it is right, one of the reasons behind this is whatever the request, if it's regarding agenda topics, comes to Dr. Maloria from you. And you've already shared it with another member. He can't then share it with the board president in planning for the meeting. So it becomes restrictive on planning the agenda.
So is that only for agenda items?
Well, that, this is discussing agenda or other topics with other board members. So it does say.
Okay, so everything else, I, I can, I, I can feel confident that it won't automatically be forwarded to the president.
I don't think so.
I mean, please don't blind copy. So I, I need to be aware.
Do that all the time. My, my, my attorney advised me to never send something to you without copying somebody.
I can't, I, this is the board's decision.
So I, 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 you know, I'm following my attorney's advice. I'm always gonna copy somebody.
You've got, somebody is another board member? Someone always being another board member?
Not always. Sometimes another board member, sometimes someone else.
I think a best practice would be not to just blind copy or copy another board member. So let me give you an example. If I have an issue and I'm bringing it to the superintendent for consideration. It's either an agenda item request or an area of issue or concern for me. I don't, I don't want to talk with another board member about that until I really know where we're going with the issue. So, right? It might be on a future agenda, at which point I might want to have a conversation prior to it being on the agenda. So. If you have a reason to copy a non-board member, by all means, if that's your, your guidance from your legal counsel, but. I wouldn't ever copy another CC or BCC somebody. Because I would want to use those conversations wisely. Or whatever it was that I was asking about or maybe advocating for in the future.
I think it does depend on what the situation is.
Yeah, if it was an agenda item request, then it needs to go to President Vickers anyway. So here's an agenda item request. And that's going to come to her for agendizing at an appropriate time. If it's a legal issue, the board president is, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, that's also an area that she would be involved in. So. That would need to go to her. You definitely want, want another board member copied on that because then we're in a pickle. So it's just thinking through those situations. If it's something you're advocating for and you might need to get another board member. On your side, you wouldn't, you wouldn't really want to just copy them. You would want to have a, you would want to think that through. So I, I don't think it's a good practice.
If, if we are asked for freedom of information as far as about an issue. When we retrieve it, would, would our IT people have the BCC? Who, who is BCC to?
Yes.
I just want you to be aware of that.
And as protocol, the part of your bylaws is to conduct district business on district email so that we can. Retrieve it for public record. So.
And that's fine. I mean, I did it sometimes because I didn't want it to go to the board president.
A member Perry, do you see in the, in this paragraph though, if you send an email to the superintendent, you have your. You're stating your position on an item. Do you see why you wouldn't want to necessarily copy another board member on that?
My reason was because then I would get scolded by the former board president called and scolded and. For hours and I did not want to deal with that. So if I copied somebody else. Then that board president couldn't be copied.
I see.
Do you feel your questions have been answered? Because we started with, Victoria asked us to go to fifteen and go to the end. So we need to go back. And I think her last question was, was everyone okay with fifteen with the? So then we can move to sixteen. Sixteen, welcoming new board members, correct?
The recommendations for sixteen were change shall to may, the board may convene a meeting to provide an orientation to incoming board members. To in paragraph two. Incoming board members shall receive a welcome letter and the board member guidebook, which contains a list of current board members, their current contact information. And then strike and if possible, a short bio on each. Continue the paragraph with information we already, already provide a calendar of upcoming meetings and then strike and any important dates they should know. Paragraph four was revised almost in its entirety. Start with board members are encouraged to avail themselves of seminars, conferences directly related to board responsibilities. And strike out throughout the first term, board members shall continue to participate in additional educational opportunities. Designed to assist them in understanding the principles of effective governance. Including but not limited to information on school finance and budget, student achievement and assessment, labor relations, community relations. Programmer evaluation, open meeting laws, and then continue with the Brown Act conflict of interest laws, et cetera. We're striking that paragraph and adding that the. Board members are encouraged to avail themselves of seminars, conferences directly related to board responsibilities in lieu of.
Any comments or questions? Seventeen, were there any? Yes, sharing articles of interest. Okay, and eighteen, managing concerns from community.
In the last sentence, there are staff members whose job it is to respond to instead of remedy. Strike remedy add respond to student and staff situations. And then when receiving a concern from a community or staff member, strike, we will use the six Rs of. Active listening and strike, repeat, request and review and leave, receive, redirect and report.
Questions or discussion on that?
Can you just read the ones you guys want to take, take away? And I think I, I, the basis for these is just out of. Our governance workshop in CSBA board president's workshop. These are kind of standard. Active listening techniques. We can definitely customize them to how we want to deal with community concerns. But I just wanted to give you some background on. Where they come from. They're pretty standard. But go ahead, Victoria. Which ones do you want to take out?
The ones that were requested or repeat, which is clarify for understanding and ask who they have spoken to prior for, to reaching out. Request, ask what they see as a solution to the problem. And review, go over the options available to the person to remedy the situation.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. I would suggest leaving, repeat. I think when I'm talking with. Community members, parents typically about an issue or a concern, it's really helpful to. Repeat back that I'm hearing the situation, right? A lot of times we get situations that we're not that familiar with, right? People are just throwing us a big, big situation. And so I, I like being able to repeat back what I heard. Especially if it's a verbal conversation. To make sure that I'm understanding.
Part of that in and not, in, in other words, to clarify for understanding, but not to ask who been spoken to.
Say that again.
Leave, clarify for understanding, but to remove, to ask who they have spoken to prior to reaching out.
I think that's really helpful because right away when I'm, when I'm dealing with a concern from a, again, a parent. And if they tell me, I haven't talked to anybody about this yet. All of a sudden I have a totally different situation, like if it's a safety concern or something that's going on, I'm on a totally different. Set of facts. If they tell me I've talked with the teacher and the principal and the.
Then I can see some clarifying language in there that would make me more comfortable with that. Ask who on the staff. Or who in that sense. So it's a district employee that they've spoken with.
Sure, yeah.
Because when I looked at that and I thought you're going to get a laundry list of, well, I talked to ten parents at the bus stop and they all agree with me. I'm just trying to avoid situations which, I mean, occur for all of us where you get into a corner. And the expectation is that you will fix it. And to me, the more you get into conversation about the nitty gritty. That's where you're going to end up. But if you're asking simply, did you speak to the teacher? That's different. Very open and it's.
And I, I would be fine with that. And if they told me that they have also talked with ten other people at the bus stop, that's also helpful information for me to know. But. I, I think it being kind of general is fine, but if we want to make it specific, that's fine too. I'm, I'm open to that. But I think repeating back and knowing who, who's. Who they've talked to before they've talked to me is really important. It's a really critical step that I've used.
As a staff person, particularly, or you, you're saying anyone?
It's just, I, I think it's a general question when I'm conversing with the community, like, you know, who have you told about this? Who have you talked to already? It's my assumption they've talked to somebody already. But I learn a lot just by asking that open ended question.
Kelly, I don't know that Kelly's comfortable with that. I just, I would not do that myself. Just, I wouldn't ask it open ended. I would just ask specific to the district employee. Which would be, which would be where they would be redirected to if they had, hadn't gone to that or to the next level if they'd already done that. Or to uniform complaint procedure. I mean, we have policies in place, but.
Yeah, and I think that's why you're trying to get a sense. I think in a natural conversation, somebody's got a concern. You're trying to figure out where they've been so far with this concern for lots of reasons that, you know, that you just mentioned. So. I, I wouldn't limit when, if I asked them, who have you spoken to and wait, I only want you to tell me if it's a staff member. I don't want you to tell me if it's. Friends or the bus stop or anybody. I'm just kind of a general, it's a general question. So I can get some more information on where to go with.
It's a guideline. I mean, these are guidelines.
Yeah, but, yeah, I think in general and then requesting. I think it's helpful sometimes when people call me with concerns to ask like, why are you, what do you see as the solution? Like why, what's the purpose of the call? What do you want me to do with this?
See, I wouldn't see that as my role.
And then requesting, you know, is just. If they're just trying to get it off their chest, you know, I'm just really upset with this, but I know that it's being handled down this chain and I'm fine with that. Then that's. You know, that's okay. But I'm trying to figure out what it is that they want me to do with the information. Does not mean that I'm going to do what they want me to do. But I'm trying to figure out what it is that they. Are intending to get out of the conversation with me. And then reviewing, I think we could strike. I don't typically have.
Out both request and review. I just think it's, to me, that is not. My role as a board member to, to inquire what solution they are looking for. Because I may not know all the, all the ins and outs of the situation. I may not know what the, what the possibilities are for them or their student. So.
It, it seems like it's a difference between what we're sort of required to do in terms of protocols. And what comes up in conversation. Like if we took out request and review, I would think, you know, I'm, there's no. Kind of protocol that I figure that out. It doesn't mean it's not going to come up in conversation now.
They may mention it. For me to ask for it, it's like I'm stepping into a role that's not mine.
Right, but if you take out request. It, it's, it's not saying you're not allowed to do that. It comes up in conversation, right? Yeah, I mean, I, I just think it's, it's, we're sort of like splitting hairs here because you talk to people and, and these are protocols. It's not saying you're not allowed to, you know, I, I was at the Winterfest. I had many conversations about school. I wasn't, you know, I wouldn't. In those conversations, say, well, I'm not allowed to hear what you think about solutions. It just, that's part of parent banter. So the question for me is, does it matter if that's in these protocols or not? Do we want to remove it because you're saying that we just shouldn't go there? Or do we want to remove it because we don't want people to be required to go there? That makes sense?
And I, I think we're missing the last two, two, which is the most important, which I think member Vickers. You know, you're making a great, great point out of the beginning, which is trying to direct people into, back into the system correctly so that their. Concern can be properly handled. I think as board members, we are brought concerns. Especially when parents feel like there, there's something really, you know, dire that they want you to know. And that the redirecting and putting that person back in the system at the correct spot is important. But it's also important for us to hear, hear out their concern and have some tools to do it. And that's. You know, to be able to actively listen without coming up with a solution or. I, I think is important.
And I, and I totally get and in, and a participant in active listening. But I see under request and review, that goes to me beyond active listening. That then becomes being a participant in a two-way conversation. And you're asking those questions as opposed to just listening.
Right. So, so I, I'm just trying to figure out what. It strikes me that the reason we have these protocols is to prevent board members from doing things that are not supportive. As a board member and to guide people in the best way possible when they have a complaint. So the question for me is, are we removing words from here because there are things we shouldn't do? As board members when people are complaining, or are we just trying to say this is the best way to do it? You see the difference?
That for me, my perception is we're not to step into that role. We're not to get involved in the remedies, the solutions, the options. That we, our role is to listen and then direct. And then we step out of it. And it's, and that's, that's been my experience. And yeah, there's been, and I've listened to long conversations. That I just listen. Dr. Kelly, you have a comment?
In, in my role of teaching social work, these, these are really important things that we always. Want our social workers to do to, as far as in, to, to respect and to listen and to give feedback. In my role as a member of the board, I'm, I tend to be very clear. And I, I, at the opening of every PTA meeting, I make the announcement that we're a policy board. And that I really have no power other than to approve policy, approve a budget. And I have one employee. And that's the superintendent. And so I can't really help you. That if you, if you need, if you need some help, you first go to the, the teacher or the site administrator. And then you go to the, to the superintendent. But I, as a board member, it's, it's not, not my role. And so that's, that's how I stay clean. But and I, how I. Look at my role here. And, and I think I'm a little bit different from my administrative challenges in the past. I really like this role.
Yeah, and I think, Dr. Kelly, that's really helpful, the way that you phrase it. A lot of times when, when I ask people like, what do you? What do you see as the solution to this problem? Like, you know, what, what would you like me to do with this? They don't really have an answer. And that's when almost verbatim, what you just said naturally ends up coming out. But you are letting them kind of go through. You know, receiving the information, making sure you understand it clearly and then directing them back into the system. But remember, Vickers, I'm, I think we should strike review. I agree with you. I think to Dr. Malcheski's point. You know, are these best practices? Do we agree that when we have these types of concerns that we're redirecting? People to the appropriate staff that can handle their concerns. That's the most important part, right? We cannot solve any of these. So I would hate to sit on any information. With the assumption that we can do anything about it. And so those last two Rs, redirecting them to the right. Spot and reporting it to the superintendent are probably the most important to me.
I wonder, could you quantify, like, just thinking, when receiving a concern from a community or a staff member. The best practice we will use. May entail the use of the six. I mean, it's going to be dependent on your conversation and let's be honest, who you're talking to and, and the approach. But I'm wondering, I mean, I don't think you're going to grab the protocol and say, okay, I'm going through my Rs. It comes in the natural commerce flow of conversation. And it depends on how well you know the person, right? And whether, you know, they're someone that you see at the dog beach five days a week, or if you're seeing them, you know, for the first time ever, right? You, you don't, that personal relationship will maybe dictate it. But I'm just wondering if it's, you know, knowing that that's just the natural flow that, you know, the best practice would be. To utilize of this format so that you can get there. But again, I think to remember Perry's point, you know, the. If you miss an R, it's not like, you know, the R police are going to come and get you. I mean, it's, it's, it's really just around trying to formulate that. So.
I think part of our problem here is trying to nail something down with descriptors that we haven't had before. We've just had an understanding that. A board member's role is not to solve problems, but to direct to the proper place. And so now we have a lot of things here, but then we don't all agree because it has, something has to do with style of communication. And also, I mean, I can. And also, I mean, I can, I've had experiences, I mean, you're going to be quoted if you say certain things to a parent or community member that you may not know that well, and then they're going to, well, a board member told me X. And so it's just, to me, I like a lot more as self-protection as to getting in the middle of something that I shouldn't be in the middle of. Not that I'm not going to hear it, but this is just gotten complicated for me.
I like most of these as guidelines. You know, I've had situations where someone has called me and said that they're getting a divorce and they think that their child is going to need counseling. What should they do? And I can easily just say, your child has a counselor at school. Call the counselor. Because if I say, oh, you better call the superintendent, that's going to freak them out. Yeah, so, but, but what I'm saying is sometimes you can, you, you can tell them who to contact.
That's exactly what we're saying. We direct them to the appropriate.
And so redirect them to the right person, not necessarily the superintendent.
Doesn't say that.
No, and that's not a, that's not somebody raising a significant concern about the district or about their student. That's somebody just needing to know where to go.
Right, right, right. And then, and then we all.
You're the one notifying the superintendent.
And then we all, and then we all have the ones who say, don't tell the superintendent.
I don't know that I've ever had that. I know you say you have had that.
Can I ask, is there consensus to take out review? Like, okay, so is everybody good with that part at least? And to add what Dr. Valoria said, best practices would be to utilize the following format?
Correct.
I don't, I think we heard, we had President Vickers, if any other board members think that helps or hurts the conversation or the protocols, I'm open to other suggestions. I think it doesn't really matter to me if it helps us and people do that naturally. Leave it in. If most people don't do that and it doesn't help them in their conversations, then we should take it out because these are our protocols.
It doesn't matter.
So I think President Vickers, if it really bothers you, you don't like having that, then take it out.
So it's not a protocol?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's recoverable, and I don't think you want discoverable. I don't think you want personnel types of stuff being discoverable.
Yes, it would be a public records request. Yes, it would be.
We were trained, we were trained on personnel issues. You called the president directly. Email's the one that I don't want it to, because it lives forever.
Parentheses, no email?
I think you could just strike, you could say superintendent through private conversation.
I think you want to be clear, no email.
I think it's good to put in no email.
On 11, board meeting to interested members of the community, add and staff. I don't see any. I didn't receive any others.
Any other questions, comments on these? Are we having these, are we also voting on these under this? The resolution, on the next, on B. Okay. So the next item to address on governance is, is B, which is approval of resolution. It's coming on the resolution, number 23-01 in support of governance protocols. Is there public comment on this item?
None received?
Have you all had a chance to see the resolution, read the resolution? Are there any questions? If no que, she said no. If there are any questions, then ask for a motion, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just wanted to make a comment that I think going through these each year is really important and talking about how we want to coherently operate as a governance team is important. I know sometimes they're kind of nitty-gritty, but I appreciate the work of the board in that area, in this area. And I think we only get stronger as a team if we spend time on it and if we think something doesn't work, even if it seems kind of small and nitpicky that we talk about it. We come up with how we want to govern and we agree to, to follow them. So just like all the boards that sign their protocols at the end, I think this was a nice suggestion on how to formalize that we are seeking effective coherent governance for the benefit of all the students in the district, right? That's what we're going towards. So I appreciate you drafting this.
Any other discussion? Is it your local? Please.
Nick? Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Perry?
No.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Malcheski? President Vickers?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution, approval of resolution number 23-02 in support of families for Laguna youth. Are you presenting this?
I'll, I can take a stab at it. Do we have a public comment?
Do we have any public comment?
All right. She's been waiting patiently, so. Yeah, so thank you. And, you know, the, the board received a request from the Families for Laguna Youth to provide whatever support they felt comfortable with, and the board requested that we bring back a resolution. And I think, Member Osborne, for her support and helping to put this together, but I think it really does encompass what the board had stated in their discussion previously, but how to support this work in the community on behalf of the youth of the community. So it's here for your discussion.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not sure. I asked already if there are any questions about it, but if there aren't questions, then I'd ask for a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? I just make a comment, which I think I made before, is that we've just been, our, part of our purpose in the district has always been to support youth in the community, and we have shared our facilities to the greatest extent that we can. I mean, last Saturday, our field was covered with Little Flag football players. They started age four. The little flags touched the top of their shoes, and there were just, we, and there was a baseball games, starting with a team arriving from Anaheim. I mean, we go out of our way, I think, to, to help provide. So it's definitely an interest that we have, and anything we can do to encourage the city is, I think, reflected in this resolution.
Yeah, and I think one of the statements that, you know, the school district will continue to work closely and collaboratively with the city of Laguna Beach, we have in the past, but we really look forward to doing more of that and especially more of that in, in light of where we are with planning for our facilities, where the city is with planning for their facilities, and really working really closely together and thinking about the youth at the center of those discussions is really important, so.
Any other discussion? And ask for a vote, please.
Nick? Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly? Member Malcheski? President Vickers?
Yes, thank you. Our next is Government Sectional Reporting, and we have, first is A, which is a board member request for an agenda item. We have public comment on this section on anything, correct? We clarified that, I think, with Mark at that meeting, that technically, public comment can be on anything. So is there any?
And no public comment received on this.
Thank you. The purpose of this item is that Member Perry has requested an item placed on a future agenda for reevaluation of the board-approved 2023-24 student calendar. The, this would reflect if the majority of the board wishes this to come back. There's no discussion, but questions? You can ask a question, question or not? I just know we need to avoid any discussion.
Yeah, you just can't have any discussion.
But can I speak to why?
Be discussion. That would, if you spoke to why, that would be, would lead to discussion with other members, so.
But we were told that if you had new information, you were allowed to bring it back.
If the board needs, if the board needs to make a determination, yeah.
If they want to hear new information or not.
Correct.
I, I'm just wondering, is, is it even possible to change the school calendar at this point?
This is not for this year. This is for the following year.
No, but it's September. I mean, now it's February, so I'm just curious, because we've published a school calendar, whether or not we can change it this close to the, I mean, it sounds like it's far away, but it's, it's close.
I think it's possible.
We would have to go back to the negotiating table with the unions and changes their work calendars, et cetera.
I think this would be a motion for reconsideration, and we, given the timeframe, given the impact on bargaining, given the impact on previously scheduled and released student calendars, I wouldn't have any interest in putting this as a motion for reconsideration on a future agenda item because the, this calendar is already approved and the board has already deliberated on this calendar. So I don't have any, I don't have any interest in reconsidering this item.
I have a great interest in reconsidering it in thinking of our high school students.
Dr. Kelly?
I, I think I support Member Osborne's comments. I think it's too late for this number two with everything that's going on.
It's, it's late. I'm sorry. Yeah, I think. I have to agree that the difficulty of revisiting the school calendar at this point would be very difficult, you know, from bargaining to setting people's schedules. My, it's, it's actually already on my schedule for next year, so I, I support Clerk Osborne on this.
I think it's, it would be very difficult too, but I think we didn't follow our guidelines and we didn't look at all of the data when we made that decision.
I wasn't here for the discussion, but isn't that part of our responsibility to have all, to, to think about what data we need to do that?
I think we have, because I don't support bringing it back either at this late date, so there would not be support for, for bringing it back and reevaluating or reexamining.
The 24-25 calendar will be presented to the board in April. That will include 20, the 24, 25, and 25, 26 school years, so just as FYI.
So two years again.
So we, can we consider important information for high school students then?
Yeah, also, I wanted to add, and, and I think, Member Perry, we need to get your copy from the last meeting. Something new this year, or maybe it's been in past years, Member Vickers could talk to that, is a board governance calendar that I found very helpful for when things typically come before the board. So something like a student instructional calendar that comes before the board every year. It sounds like in March or maybe early April for two years out. That can help us think about whether we have requests for data related to that or when we would be approving it. But I would hate to renig on a, on a decision that the board has already made, especially when it's something that comes to the board every year in March. So anyhow, that governance calendar that lays it all out, that would be a great time to bring your concerns, and it sounds like that meeting is coming next month.
This came in a November meeting and we didn't look at all of the data, refused to.
So I think when it comes on the calendar in November and the next meeting, whatever concerns you would want to be addressing now, they're going to be addressed when we approve the next instructional calendar, which it sounds like is in March or maybe early April. So it's coming on the future agenda anyways.
That's great.
None?
Kelly, did you have a report?
I do have a report. I'll try and condense it due to the time. I did attend the High School Low Ocean Film Showcase. It was fantastic. And I had two meetings with our facilities subcommittee on February 6th and January 25th. We reviewed our master plan update with staff and with city leaders, and I'm really looking forward to our March 23rd study session with our board on that because I think we're going to have some extensive discussions on facilities. I also met with a sustainability committee on February 6th. We heard an update from our consultant. We heard some work out of design teams, and they mentioned some of the upcoming projects that they're tasked or kind of came up with doing. I attended the School Power trustee meeting as their representative. They are preparing for the March 18th Gala at Monarch Beach. They have trustee nominations underway. Dr. Keller gave a great update on some of the thinking behind challenge success, and they're renovating their cottage. That's what School Power is doing. I also attended the Lumberyard Chef Challenge. And that's it.
Dee, did you have a report? Okay, thank you. Jim?
I attended the high school PTA meeting. I attended the, the all-inclusive PTA meeting, and I'm just always impressed with everything our, our PTAs are doing, and I thank them behalf of the board for, for, for their great work, and I'm not going to go into details. Kelly summarized some of it already, the School Power, et cetera. I also went to the Community Coalition, which has a wonderful group of community partners that is working on drug prevention programs, and it was, Michael Keller gave a nice presentation there concerning us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very briefly, I attended the endowment meeting, which was extremely interesting. The endowment's in good shape relative to. The endowment's in good shape relative to what many other endowments are doing. Um, you know, given the difficult last year. It was also just a very interesting discussion of the relationship between the group and School Power and the support they're doing and some of the, um, School Power initiatives in the school, schools. So, um, I, I really enjoyed and learned a lot.
Thank you. I listened to the, um, presentation on the governor's budget. And it was really interesting and some move, money being moved different places. And the fact that it seemed that'll, if I got the right, if I got the right message, that school districts would rather have money for, uh, academic uses than have it in transportation, uh, electric buses. Because a lot of districts just see that as a real problem. They're not, um, they're not ready for it. And, but the lot can change with them may revise. But that if we are going to, in a sense, decide to lobby for anything, which we could do as a board. And, I mean, we're in such great shape. I don't know how you feel, Mr. Jackson, but I remember Norma Shelton said she used to always wanna, like, slink down in her seat because other districts are struggling so much financially and we're, we're so strong and so, um, so well-funded by our community funding. But anyway, if we decided we want to do that, there are some points that they made. And so I would, uh, think that that might be helpful as far as what they're doing in, in, and any kind of information that goes from committees to the governor as far as what's most important to the, to the schools. I took some notes on it and I know you were involved in it also. Um, and then the, the facilities committee is, as, um, Member Osborne mentioned, is, uh, going to be moving forward with that. It'll be an active part of our joint meeting discussion. And it was a good meeting that we had with the city. I think they, um, learned a lot from us about what we were planning to do already and what we had begun to do as far as, uh, district plans for the long range, our 10-year plan. And, um, parking seemed to be an, uh, uh, an interesting topic to them. So, yeah, that, that will be, that joint meeting will be, I think, a good meeting. Other than that, I think I've just, you guys have carried the, the weight of attending meetings. And I, I appreciate the good reports, thank you. And your report?
I'll be very brief. Um, and as President Vickers mentioned, uh, the budget is, uh, is out, has been out for a while. And now we're starting to see the trailer language that's being attached to it. So now we have a little better idea of the mechanisms that the governor's proposing. Um, obviously, the legislature will pick up and will determine their priorities. And then, you know, they kind of meet to confer. On that note, um, I will be heading up to Sacramento with Axe as the vice president, vice president of legislative action in April. Um, taking a group of, uh, administrators, um, district office staff and fellow superintendents. A small group of about 19 of us are gonna go and, um, go around and lobby, um, uh, on this agenda in particulars. And, and one of the biggest issues, um, that we're, uh, all facing is related to the art music block grant, which, you know, the title of that's a little deceiving. I think they did it for public reasons, um, uh, to be able to say they gave money to art and music. But then it was such an open opportunity to use it for anything, including facilities and, um, all sorts of, of things. That, uh, the governor's proposal is to cut that in half. And a lot of districts, especially some of our surrounding districts, have already kind of allocated, like, determined they need that funding to continue to do some of the things they've been doing. So, uh, there is a letter from all the Orange County superintendents that's going to the state level, of which I'll sign on as well. Just to say that, you know, we don't believe that that's the best mechanism to, um, to do. It, it does, as, uh, Jeff mentioned, um, we have received a portion of that money. We didn't necessarily budget for it, um, so it came as additional revenue. Um, we don't like to budget for things because we never know what the state's gonna cut in half, as we've recognized. But, uh, several of my fellow superintendents just feel passionately about this. And so, um, we're doing it as a concerted, uh, county. So all 29 school districts will be, will be signing onto that letter, um, as a superintendent notice and representing the board. CSBA is in the works of, of preparing something, uh, a resolution. So if I see that, and when I see that, I'll definitely pass it along if it's something the board wishes to consider to pass along from the CSA perspective, um, as well. And, um, that's it.
Thank you. Break, we probably come in on break. And we're, we will be, um, moving to closed session. Yes, we will come back here in a minute. So we have a brief break, which is, walk, walk across. Sure. On favor? Aye, thank you. Oh, student, yes, you, you, you wanna go home? I don't blame you.